Bring the order this regular February 19th Newton Falls City Council meeting to order. If you could turn off your cell phones or turn them to vibrate and let's stand for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Stay standing for a moment while Pastor Scott Rowe opens up in prayer and also during the time of prayer if you could keep Ralph Gillespie and your thoughts and prayers and his family. He was what a two-time.
Ward one.
Two-time councilman in Ward one and just a solid citizen in our community.
Dear heavenly Father, we come before you and I think about Ralph today, Lord. I just pray that you would just be with him, Lord God, that you would be with his family in this circumstance, Lord God, and that you would work out everything for your good and your glorious purposes, Lord. And I ask for your blessing in favor to be upon this council meeting here tonight, Lord God, with the council, the city manager and the mayor, Lord, that they would make decisions that are based on your values, Lord God, and what you tell us according to your word, Lord God. And I pray that we would just put you first in everything that we do and every decision that we make, Lord. And I pray, Lord God, that you would just be with us and encourage us and strengthen us as the community of Newton Falls, that we would be united, Lord. And I just pray that you would unite us in spirit, thought and purpose. And I pray this in your whole name, in Jesus' name, amen.
Roll call.
Alberini.
Here.
Sivette.
Here.
Bariak.
Waddell.
Braymire.
Here.
Okay. All right, do we have anybody that'll make a motion to move forward the Preservation Foundation so that they can recognize Mr. Bariak now instead of them waiting until later on in the meeting?
Second.
Okay. All right. Roll call.
Sivette.
Yes.
Bariak.
Yes.
Waddell.
Yes.
Braymire.
Yes.
All right, passes. Okay. You can bring them up there. Okay, if individuals for the Preservation Foundation want to come forward.
Ms. Harg, could you stand at the microphone, please?
Where's the microphone?
Right on the podium.
Hello, my name is Lisa Harrigan. I'm the president of the Newton Falls Preservation Foundation and I'm here representing the Board of Directors and members. Our mission statement is to preserve Newton Falls historic architecture, landmarks and cultural heritage through restoration programs, improvement projects and the active engagement of the community. Some of our goals include the beautification of the riverbanks and the enhancement of parks. I'm here tonight to present Mr. John Bariak and Bariak's Tree Service for an outstanding citizenship award. It is given in great recognition of restoring and preserving the history of the Newton Falls community. The work that John and his crew has done at Commerce Park and the Riverbank brings out the beauty in our small town and makes Newton Falls a wonderful place to live. The Preservation Foundation knows the impact that restoring a piece of Newton Falls history can have to our community. I drove past there on the way here and the geese are all enjoying where you cleared. It was a beautiful sight. So I thank you. Thank you for all that you were able to hold close to it. We appreciate it.
I'd like to say tonight is that I appreciate this award, the award from the bottom of my heart and anything I can do to enhance this town and its great citizens, you can count on Bariak.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I could be recognized for a moment, this is the section of the agenda that calls for special presentations by staff members and department. First thing I want to mention is that during the last few days, the bank inadvertently made it seem like Christmas in Newton Falls and the bank used electronic transfers instead of to transfer one paycheck to each individual in their account to some of our employees, two paychecks into their account. And Anna Musson, our finance director, was able to sniff out the inadvertent electronic transfers and was able to communicate with the bank so that they're able to recall those electronic transfers, but was due to her diligence. She actually was aware of it happening just within a few minutes of the electronic transfers inadvertently being made by the bank and we appreciate her diligence. Also want to thank Ms. Musson because of the fact that the date of February 29th, 2019's Ohio checkbook, open checkbook, will be available to all of our citizens by going online through the state service and it's something we've been working on for a long time. We've had some delays in that regard by virtue of the fact that every check has to be audited because we are not allowed to reveal private information and proprietary information, which is contained on some checks, some private citizen information is contained on some of the checks. But they've been working away and we're now prepared and on the date of February 29th, the open checkbook will be in place for 2019 and then we'll be quickly working on getting 2020 up to date. And last but not least, I want to make sure that we received phone calls from all of the council members. Anna Musson also has been preparing every month, some of you haven't noticed it, a credit card report for each one of the departments. So please make sure that you contact our offices if you have questions in that regard. And Mr. Chairman, that concludes my presentations. I'll mention a few other things in the city manager's report, but thank you for letting me make that presentation.
You're very welcome. Okay, if that's it and we're gonna...
Public comments?
Yeah.
I do my time.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and do the public comments and keep in mind unless prearranged, the public comment section are limited to three minutes. A three-minute timer is used and when the timer sounds, you will be asked to conclude your statement. The comment sections on the agenda are not a debate or a question and answer session. The first public comment section is for agenda items only, so.
I'm Connie Smith-Talcott, 136 West Church Street. I'm also the president of Heritage Accord and I'm here to respectfully ask for your passage of ordinance 2020-05, which authorizes the city manager to enter into the lease agreement for the community center. We've been working out the, hammering out the details. I think it's a great agreement for both parties and we have a strong leadership team that is prepared to get this project done. Thank you.
Katie Carl, 128 West Corey Street. There's quite a bit on the agenda this evening and what's most concerning is the changes in your roles of council and the format changes for public comments and people speaking to all of you, all the members of council and the mayor, is an important part and feedback to all of you because it helps you as our representatives, well, in my opinion, okay, get a feeling or get a sense of how we would like you to represent us and if there's anything that has happened at the meeting, the end section or end public comments portion of the meeting, it also helps us to give you the feedback on what transpired or what happened during the meeting and if there's anything we'd like you to change for the next meeting or, excuse me, or if such as the last meeting, the shock of what had happened with the purchase of the property, which the change of council roles, yes, it's in your purview to do that and to change, but to silence the voice of the people in whatever format, which this would be, a major silencing of the people, I don't think you want to go through with that. Yes, the public comment portion at the beginning of the meeting is still there and I know you want to have a business meeting in a format to get the business done. That's great, but keep it the way it is, have it to where it's just agenda items in the beginning so that it can go quickly on the agenda per the agenda items and then at the end, let people speak to you about what their concerns, you know, in the neighborhood or whatever they may have in our community. And that's my opinion. Thank you.
Richard Zemeznik, 242 Oak Knoll. I come before you on a couple of issues. The first you mentioned already, Mr. Ralph Gillespie, I'd like to pay homage to him. I took his position after he served eight years on council here in Mr. Sivette's seat. He was a very dedicated person for this community, very community oriented. I served on the school board and a couple of other committees while he was here and that's all I want to say about him. I'm going to miss him. I don't know if any of you will, but he was a very nice person. The second thing is I would hope that you would pass the community center agreement and get it open and so they can start working on it. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Brian Crop, 247 Elizabeth Street. I come up here this evening to talk about a few things on the agenda, but also to make mention that we have, we are going to be circulating a referendum petition for the purchase of the church because myself and a few other people...
That's on the agenda.
So we'll be circulating a referendum petition around. What I do want to address is the amendment number five, the changes as Katie alluded to as far as the rules of council. I would suggest that if you guys want to change the way that council approaches these things, what you should do is have the community events, community events section before the public comments right after roll call and then have your first role of public comments based on the agenda and then the last section should be a public comment section based on anything anybody wants to talk about based on the meeting. That's how it should go. Community events should be first because most people are going to check out after an hour, hour and a half of whatever's going on in this meeting. They want to hear, they want to hear the meat of what the meeting is going to be about. They want to hear about community events, which you guys should be touting those things anyway, and then they want to hear what's about the agenda and then people want to respond to what they hear during the meeting. I would like to see the community center, I would like to see the city manager be allowed to do that. I myself have a couple reservations with the language of some of this stuff, but if Ms. Talcott is, she's all for it, then I think it's a go. I think that's a huge thing for the city. It's one of the most historic parts of our town and that we should be highlighting and showcasing. Mr. Bariak, congratulations on your award, sir. I would like to note, I know this isn't on the agenda either, but in the minutes, or I'm sorry, on the charter and the codification, the new codification that was done in November, your name is spelled wrong on the very first page. Your name is spelled Bar-K, so it's Bariak. Just want to point that out to you guys, so. So thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, we'll move on then to reports and I'll start off. I don't have too much here with the, I like to go door to door and have different meetings and spend time with the citizens to, as Katie had said, you know, to hear how people feel about things with the heartbeat of the community is and did get to go to the ballgame the other night, the boys game with Mr. Lynch and commentate on the game. We had a good time there, got to spend a lot of time with individuals and just wanted to mention that the boys won and with them winning, it's the first league title that Newton Falls boys have had in either 11 or 12 years and then they, they won again last night in the season finale and I think that makes them what, 19 and three they finished off and first tournament game is February 28th at Newton Falls against the winner of Grand Valley in Rookfield and I think Mr. Lynch might be commentating that and he's got a mystery partner there. I'm not sure who it was. I heard it was going to be Mr. Bariak, but I don't know. But either way, just want to invite you to come out, you know, seven o'clock game and as I said, you know, try to spend time with individuals and I haven't been able to get out door to door because of all the white stuff on the ground, but I have had a few meetings with citizens and one of the things that came up often is why did we vote on the congregational church through emergency vote? And the thing about that, just to shed a little bit of light on it, is what I told individuals, it wasn't something that the council here was trying to hide or trying to pull a fast one. The reason for that is the contract that the seller gave to the council wasn't given to the council until I think it was what, February 3rd during the day.
The morning of February.
The morning of February 3rd and in the contract itself, it needed agreed upon by midnight of that day, so it was an emergency to meet their wishes and that's really all there was to that, just to, I figured I would throw that out there so that, because I know there's a lot of people wondering, what's the emergency? Why did they do this? Why didn't they have another reading on it or anything like that? That's, that's all I have, council members. Mr. Bariak, do you have anything?
I had no meetings, but I will be attending utility approval board Friday morning. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Mrs. Braymire?
I don't have much to report except the Park and Recs. Mr. Waddell has some things he needs to comment on this. They have a plan.
Yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think most of you know that I've had this passion for the last four or five years of putting together a recreational facility for our community. I think it's very well received in the community. I've had a lot of discussion, a lot of youth are excited about it. We've got, you know, the opportunity with the purchase of the church to add on to that. There's a lot of grant money that's available that needs to be studied and looked at and I think that we need to kind of just start looking at it and putting together some plans and some thoughts. I talked to a couple of members of the Park and Recs Commission. They're really excited about it that they're actually going to be able to get involved and do something and I think Ms. Braymire would be, you know, a great choice to sit there and do this. And just a couple of things I did, I sat down and did a, eh, just kind of a rough schematic thing of a little bit of a concept because it's a little narrow over there, but you know, you've got locker rooms and restrooms and concession stands and exercise rooms, two basketball courts, batting cages, racquetball courts and badminton courts. And the interesting thing that I found out when I started looking at this was you need two of everything and if you have two of everything, you can run tournaments and the AAU and those people pay a lot of money to go out and run tournaments and we have nothing in the area where our locals can go play. You guys travel a long way to go and do that. What's interesting is if you take a basketball court, you can put a tennis court inside the basketball court, then you can put a volleyball court inside the tennis court and with the new stanchions that go into the ground and cover over or things that go into the air, you can clean those all off and then you can take and roll a tarp out or a grass and baseball teams can play infield in there, the soccer leagues can play. It's really multifunctional, it could be very, very well done. The other thing too is you can play badminton inside of a racquetball court and you can play volleyball inside of a racquetball court. So there's a lot of things that you can use to do that. The Park and Recs Commission doesn't need council's blessing to go out and study this and do this. They're an independent commission and they can do anything on their own. But what I thought we would do is I would ask for a motion that I have here, just to show support to the Park and Recs Commission to at least start looking at this and the motion's kind of self-explanatory because I want to make sure that all the sports are represented, all the leagues are represented, that the seniors are represented, the public's represented, can throw some input into this thing. When I was in Columbus last week, I was talking with a consultant during one of my meetings and it was just a lot of fun to sit down and talk about this and I think it's something we could do. So I would ask for a motion to, for a vote of support for the Park and Recreations Commission to start looking into a recreational facility, including but not limited to the input from council, the baseball softball leagues, the soccer league, the school volleyball and basketball teams, residents, seniors and consultants.
May I just stand for a second? Why don't you have a, you presented it, you presented it wide. I like your reading. Would you, I suggest when we go to changing of tonight's agenda, you add that as a motion then and we'll keep it with the regular part of the business.
Okay, I'll do that. Thank you. You're welcome.
Okay, I just wanted to comment on that, that I'm really thrilled with your research and each of you, you know, looking at that yourself as well as Mrs. Braymire and I know that, like we had spoke, that there's a lot of grants available for things like that, so it's not like you're looking to just reach into the wallet of the taxpayers and we had, we had talked about if we are flexible with this building such as this, like you brought up, the groups of basketball courts, the groups of volleyball courts and such, there's, things like this are in very high demand, you know, individuals I know myself who travel all over for AAU and the money's not just citizens, but groups that come in in AAU, travel ball, senior citizens, things, community events and things like that. If we do our homework to make sure that we're good stewards of the community's money and I think we could put something together really nice. Did you have anything? Mr. Alberini?
Yeah, this is on, from the...
We don't want to duplicate reports.
Yeah, from the, from the other report there. I did attend the second class of seven for the AMP certification and just a couple of things that were interesting and you're going to like this one. The, I've nothing really do that we've talked about with MISO and PJM, the RTOs are the ones that we have to deal with and they're continuing to raise the transmission fees. The transmission fees have increased 100% since 2014 and they're going to continue to rise. The estimate is in 2019 was $14 per megawatt hour, 2015 is going to be $15 per megawatt hour, so they continue to increase and we have to absorb that into our utility rates. But all the delivery charges fall into three categories, which are energy capacity and transmission and transmission being the one that's most volatile. Here's the one you want to look at and we've asked this question and we never got it until a couple of days ago. We've talked about the low kilowatt hour cost for NiPO, for Niagara Mohawk. NiPO is a, the distribution of hydroelectric is based on a formula that determines how many megawatts we get from NiMo based on the number of residential electric meters we had in 2002. The next time this determination will be made is in 2027. So in 2027, based on our electric meters, depends on how much money or how much electric we can receive from NiMo at that lower rate. So I thought that was, it was well worth just that little bit of information because we've been asking about that. So the, you know, we've been over to the church a couple of times and took measurements and done a lot of information there and got some maps, went down to Columbus to the Ohio Department of Public Safety for the governor's opioid proposed settlement. There's three or four major vendors that make pills and opioids and that. Excuse me, one of them's already filed bankruptcy and what they're afraid of, since there's so many lawsuits across the United States, is that they're going to file bankruptcy and everybody's going to get, you know, shut out. So the governor is, put together a commission and they're proposing to do an out of court settlement and the information I'm going to give you is somewhat public, but it is not official because they're still doing negotiating, but if everything was official today and it happened actually today, the city of Newton Falls would receive $331,000 from this settlement. Now that may change before the settlement's agreed upon, it may go up, may go down and the settlement may not even happen, but what they did is they set out a projection for every village, every city, every county, all through the state of Ohio was on a chart and everybody could see what they're, what they might get out of this settlement if they can reach an out of court settlement and that goes to the police department to try to offset the costs of the Narcan or, you know, whatever they got to do for their part of it. So they're trying to make a settlement and I think that it was a good meeting to go to. I came back and went to the Trumbull County Commissioners Economic Development Summit and there was anything new there. It was basically a lot of discussion about the proposed miles annexation. They had speakers from the chamber and from the county and from the portal authority, really nothing new with that, but they reiterated the same information that we continue to get, that we have a strong base in the valley and everybody, every community is doing the same thing, trying to attract business and we need to do what's important for us that sets us aside from somebody else and it's interesting to do that. And down to Columbus with the chamber on the drive-in down there and the group that I was with was partially, last year we talked about the Camp Ravanna and the infrastructure and since that was kind of last year and we don't have anything really going this year, I kind of was with the additive manufacturing and the Youngstown incubator ideas down there and there's a lot of things that are happening with the incubator, there's a lot of things happening with the Ohio Turnpike and it's, we'll get to the Turnpike in a second, but we had a couple of GAS meetings with the county. We went to the county once, Mark Stempert and I went down there and then the county came up to us with all the department heads. We have a new plotter over there that we can plot our own maps now. We have a real nice program that we're working with, so the county is, you know, helping us do all that and George down at the auditor's office is extremely knowledgeable about those things. We did have a meeting yesterday and I'm not going to take all of Mr. Alberini's thunder, but I do want to thank him for providing a meal and for everybody. We had elected officials there, important business leaders from the county, the chamber and I think one of the biggest concepts that we learned there is that we need to, again, identify ourselves and separate ourselves from everybody else. Economic development is not about what you have to offer, it's about how they can weed you out and leave somebody else. So we need to kind of set ourselves apart with either incentive programs or things that we have to offer or the area we want to get into. But I think the most important thing to come out of yesterday's meeting is the proposed autonomous Ohio Turnpike. They're putting devices on the Turnpike where you're going to be able to drive cars without anybody driving them up and down the Turnpike. They're going to be going by themselves, so you'll be in there, but they're all autonomous. And the Turnpike is looking to remove all the toll gates and go the same style they have in PA with just the arches you drive under and you'll be getting them, either your EZ Pass is going away or they're going to tag your license plates or whatever, but the toll booths are going away. Depending on the placement of the toll booth, it could be very beneficial to us where it may be free from the Ohio line to where the arch goes between us and Manaway. So we have a lot of good things that may come out of the Turnpike going to autonomous plus the Turnpike also has the high-speed internet on the Turnpike. They're looking to lease that out. We may have the opportunity to do that with some other things, so that was a real interesting meeting yesterday to talk with people again and continue to work on the things that we need to do to, you know, showcase Newton Falls, so thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Alberini?
I'll keep it, I'll use the KISS method, keep it simple, stupid. When we go to these economic development meetings, it's always good to have another second or third set of eyes, of course, Lyle and David Lynch. A lot of great information came out of this meeting yesterday. Those folks who were in attendance were Gil, Blair, Skater, and the Senator, David De Christopher, our site consultant here. are on the site consultant here. We also had Shay McMillan, who lives in the site lands off the Yidda Towne Warren Chamber of Commerce, identify properties. Our own Dave Hanson, which Mr. Hanson's property is a prime candidate to be developed, and he's played an important part in this as well. So I'll just, I'll just leave it right there, because there's things that they tell you not to talk about, but I'm going to say 2020, again, is going to be the year for us, so.
All right.
Nothing to report at this time.
All right. Mr. Law Director?
I have nothing to report, but I'll answer any questions.
What do you have any? Okay, Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, just a couple of things I wanted to touch on. First is that fiber is moving along, and I want to make sure everybody understands that we've been talking about having a utility operated by the city of Newton Falls, which is high-speed internet fiber for all citizens in our community and for businesses. It's a great economic development tool. But I want to make sure I clarified something, because there's been a little bit of confusion. It's not going to be cheap to put in a high-speed internet system. However, our intention is to only develop high-speed internet fiber as a utility through the issuance of revenue bonds, which means that the general citizens, the taxpayers, the general fund are all insulated from the cost of its installation. It's only paid for by the revenue from subscribers that buy the high-speed fiber service. So the rest of the revenue and financial structure of the city is insulated completely from any kind of exposure whatsoever. So it's a great opportunity, and we think that'll be a very positive. And I've got some meetings coming up, and I want to thank Brian Axiotis of the Planning Commission for making a point of jumping in with both feet, and I'll be reporting back to council. My ambition, and you know, sometimes our ambitions aren't always fulfilled, but I hope we at least get close, is to have us begin installation somewhere late January or early February 2021, maybe even in December of 2020. But all the revenue bond financing has to be in place, and all the agreements for the purpose of these revenue bonds have to be approved by this city council, that'll all be in front of you. But I assure you that whatever plan we put in front of you will be one, we have an opportunity to make sure that there's no exposure to the finances of the fine city of Newton Falls. Second thing I want to talk about is a little bit of a footnote to something the mayor said about the purchase of the church. Councilman Bariak called me about a, about a week ago and said, "Make sure at the council meeting, you clarify why council was put in this position of having to vote on an emergency." So I want to get a few dates out there. On January 24th, I sent a contract, had a couple typos in it, but the contract on January 24th was sent out, and it said, "In order for this to be a real contract, it must be approved by city council by the date of February 3, 2020." And that contract went out on January 24th. There was another version of it that went out on the 31st to correct some typos, but the date of February 3 actually went to the members of the church on January 24th. And I had indicated to the representative of the church at that time that if they wanted February 3 to be the date, and by the way, they wanted council to act on it sooner rather than later, because they didn't want the situation where it was all up in the air, what's happening with the church, what's happened with the church. So they didn't want city council to take their time to have, to have the vote on it. So I sent it to them on January 24th, and it said, "Must be approved by city council on February 3." That was in the agreement, and that was there because they had asked for an early approval by council. But by sending it to them on January 24th, it was my hope, and I thought they were going to meet on January 26th, to review that document and give the city council an opportunity to hold a special meeting during that week for first reading, and then have the second and final reading on February 3. That was the plan. Unfortunately, and I don't blame anybody for this, the church had this contract saying February 3 had to be the approval date, and they did not put the last signature on their end of the contract until February 3, the morning of February 3, at 8:00 in the morning. And that puts you in the unenviable position of having a contract that was going to expire at the end of the day, February 3, because, and here they waited until February 3 to sign their end of the contract. If they had signed it several days beforehand, as we thought was going to happen, then council would have had a special meeting, reading one, then reading two on February 3. Putting things through on an emergency basis is not always the best way to do it. But that contract was going to disappear into thin air under its own terms by midnight on February 3. Now, a couple other things should be kept in mind in that regard. The $1,000 deposit, which is our good faith way of securing the contract as a deposit, wasn't paid until February 5. Some rumors floating around that the, that the check was issued prior to council's approval, wasn't. Wasn't issued till February 5, after council took its action. And then just a brief footnote, the county values that property at $900,000. And this council, in order to make sure this deal didn't get away with your backs up against the wall, did something that's a little bit unusual, because you ended up proving on it February 3 with just one reading. But Councilman Bariak said, "Please let the people know what happened." That's what happened, folks, and I think council made the right decision at that time. No one likes to be put in that position, but there are times when it's a, it's a smart thing to do.
Mr. Chairman? I might add that we met, what, three times in executive session to discuss the church, discuss the properties, discuss the-
Is that allowed to say that?
We did that, because you have, you know, you have a section of the Ohio Vice Code that allows you to be in executive session for the purchase and sale of property, and we did that. We also have discussed over time the cost of, you know, refurbishing the annex down there, which is probably on the plus side of $175. And if you look at the, the cost to refurbish the building versus the cost of the purchase, and what we got for what we paid, it's a tremendous deal. It's an absolutely tremendous deal. You know, what happens to the annex, it's up to Mr. Sivette's motion, it's going to be here for the study of the buildings. But, you know, we, we talked about these things, we discussed them, it wasn't something that we, again, pulled out of the hat. There's been a lot of discussion about this. And also, on the fiber part, there are the two major grants that are out there, the total about $800 million for grants that we would be working on to apply for that in addition to-
Yes.
... funding.
Yeah, that's great. All right, the last point I want to raise, as part of my report, Mr. Chairman, is also another footnote to what you had to say, and that has to do with Tigers basketball. If you look at the screen to your left, Mr. Chairman, you'll see that the Tigers basketball is, maybe we're experiencing some technical, technical, there we go. The Tigers, the game against Holland was amazing last night, but 19-3, the best record ever, and something very special is happening. I get the same feeling that, that little tingly sensation we got when the girls volleyball team was, was winning district championships, though they are cutting the nets over there. And these are exciting times, and I hope everybody gets out there. The first championship game, as the mayor mentioned, is a week from Friday, and it's a home game, so, which is unusual playoff, so make sure everybody gets out there. And, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my city manager's report this evening.
All right.
I had a question for the city manager.
Certainly.
Who are the current members of the CIC?
Current members of CIC are Mark Stimpert, Mayor Klein, and yours truly.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Lynch? I want to tell the public tonight to appreciate those, sir, about addressing me when I addressed you. I am a firm advocate against emergency legislation. And I want to say, and I don't know what's out of executive session or not, so I'm not going to get into that, you said there was a deal or two, we'd been back, Mr. Waddell said they'd been in there three times. I'm not even going to address that. I was led to believe that if we didn't do the deal, it would be gone. And I backed it on the floor and gave my reasons for backing it. I would do the same thing over, and it was unanimous council.
Sure.
So, but I, I want the public to know that I am totally against, this is what we run into when we go ahead and pass stuff in emergency legislation, a lot of times the people just want to have their say.
Sure.
They've elected us to do the job, but I still feel the public has the ultimate right to at least voice their opinion. Okay, that, wow, something else I want to say. I know you went to a fiber optic coverage. And I know that you had promised Mr. Luxer, Mr. Steve, what's his name?
Schecter.
That would have fiber optic. Are you saying on the floor that nothing, even though we have to vote on it, the good faith and credit of the city of Newton Falls will not be put behind it?
That's correct.
Okay. Well, because I'll tell you what, we're not Fairlawn, and I know it's a good thing. I've done a little studying on it. But you've heard of Branson and Virgin Airlines, and he says within 10 years, fiber optic could be obsolete if they get enough satellites up there, or best, at best they'll be using it as a, to help the, fiber will still be used, but I'd like to know, is the cost worth the benefit, and are we going to be able to sell these bonds? Wouldn't need to do some investigation, and Niles voted it down. They had a chance to get into it here, I don't know how long, and they voted it down. I don't know why, it seems like a good thing, but I think it needs a lot of investigation before we go further and be promising for seven jobs, to be promising, we're not Fairlawn, but thousands of jobs, 30,000 people, million-dollar homes are. I want to see that, are we going to benefit from it in the long run? Everybody? I want to, I'd like to see it studied, that's all. I'm not against it, but I'd like to-
May I be recognized, Mr. Chairman? Thank you. Councilman Bariak-
We haven't even scratched the surface.
The surface, in terms of providing information to this council. So you're going to have absolutely every opportunity, but as I mentioned before, the full faith and credit of the city will not be exposed, and the people taking the risk under revenue bond situation are ones in which the bondholders, most of whom are going to be Wall Street investors, are the ones that take the risk. Not you.
I think the last time we talked about this, I did talk about the satellites.
Yes.
And I did some more research on that, because the Niles issue is more or less a ton of pressure from Spectrum is what that was.
Yeah.
And a lot of money that Spectrum spent, instead of fixing their system, they browbeat everybody to tell them what a bad deal it was going to be. But, you know, there is that possibility out there. But a lot of the research, if you start reading a lot of research, is fiber is not coming to rural America. It's just too costly to put out there, and that's one of the reasons for, you know, maybe the future of satellites or other types of fiber. And, you know, I consider this kind of rural America, because there isn't anything around us for 15 miles, or if you go to Warren, and Rivanna's the other way, and, you know, there's, we're not in the middle of all that. So in order for us to provide, you know, a service to our people, our businesses, even maybe the surrounding areas someday, I think it's a benefit to us. Obviously, in all the things we're talking about with economic development, I think it's a good tool. But if you, there are a lot of small co-ops, a lot of small electric utilities out there that are putting that in for rural customers, because people want that, and they don't have it. And I think someday down the road, yeah, you'll see something, that's just the way technology is. But, you know, when will that come to, you know, this part of Trumbull County? You know, it may come to Warren, it may come to Youngstown, or, you know, Girard and Niles, but when's it going to come to the outskirts of the county, or, you know, wherever it is? So I, I think it's something that we do need to do for our people.
Comments, Mr. Mayor? Refresh my memory, guys, because we were there together yesterday. I think they talked about this, about the Turnpike having high-speed internet on it, and one of the things that was going to happen, Newton Falls would be able to tap into that.
Yes.
X amount of, was it thought, the whole community, or just a certain?
Sure.
The whole community would be able to tap into that on the Turnpike. And in the conversation, now, the next step up, to John's point, was, yeah, satellites were going to be the next step up as far as modernization, because it's kind of scary stuff, because some of the things they explained to us that cars were going to do is like-
Space age.
Yeah, it's, yeah, George Orwell, 1984.
When they're done, may I be recognized when they're done?
Was that, sir? Couldn't hear you.
I asked the chairman when they're all done if I could be recognized.
I'm done.
Gentlemen, ladies, do you understand this, you're all, this is question action session. You're talking about stuff that's not even on the agenda, that stuff he hasn't done before. The reason these meetings go two hours long is because we're all talking about something that's not even on the agenda, it's not even proposed. He said finance, or it's our fiber, he's going to look into it. Next thing you know, we're talking about our 15 options, what to do, that we're going to be doing with 11 months from now. So we just had 15 minutes talking about him saying he's looking into the fiber and going to get back to us, and you're going to vote and see all the information he brings, and you get the input and have that very strong conversation you all just had, when it comes before council properly. I mean, I'm not saying, I'm not trying to discourage conversations, but we don't need to have conversations about stuff that's on the agenda, we're, we're not getting anywhere. So my, this is question and action on the section of the reports. For purposes, he makes a report, you have a question, ask it, let's move forward after that. If you want to have those discussions, you're free to have them in your comments section at the end, that's what that there is for. So, again, while I appreciate the open exchange, and I don't chair the meetings, I'm just suggesting that we kind of keep reports to reports and questions from the parties giving the reports, and these other items we put in the proper place. Thank you for the interview.
I started this whole thing, that's not me.
Mayor, may I have a second address? Thank you. A lot of the public listens to these meetings, and they want to know what's going on. If we, I'm sure that's not, a couple minutes isn't going to be, and I want to read you something here. This is out of council, rules of conduct and procedure. General rules. Participation by the general public in the legislative process is encouraged, and opportunities for public comment should, shall, whenever practical be provided at every council meeting. Now surely, we don't, Mr. Fritz, we don't badger Mr. Lynch, but when we're, when my credibility and this council's credibility is put to the test, and he runs the city, I felt that he should maybe explain it a little bit, so the public knows. Are we going to keep it in? I don't know how any other way to get some of this stuff out to the public, sir.
You can have it placed on the agenda. Parties know it's going to be there, and we'll make it part of the agenda. The question, I'm not trying to stifle your conversations, but you talked about whether or not we should think about what we're going to be talking about 10 years from now. That's not part of the conversation tonight. He's telling you, he's getting the research, the information to come back. Whether or not he knows where the nodes are doesn't make a lot of difference at this stage. He's going to get the information and present it as a full party. I apologize, I'm not trying to insult anybody.
No, no, no.
No, you don't insult me.
You're all getting, you're all getting, trying to get the information now, when you're premature with the information. You did everything we're going to have to do again, hopefully, four or five months from now, when he has all the information on how the bonds are going to be, what the construction cost is going to be, if there's multiple plans, he's going to present them. You hired a city manager to bring those things to you. Ask the questions about what you don't know, about what's on the agenda, and he, if you want to put something on the agenda, present it to the staff to put on the agenda, and we keep them meetings through a business meeting. I'm just suggesting we focus a little better. And with the new mayor, I didn't want to step on his toes, but I thought with that conversation, it was a good example to show where we just spent 10 minutes, and now another 10 minutes explaining it.
Excuse me, Mr. Fritz, it's up to council to formulate its own rules of council and that, not for the law director to tell us what we're, what we're to do. And I'm sorry, Mr. Lynch, but sometimes I want to get someone on the record to says to the public exactly what's going on.
John, no apologies.
I'm not trying to badger you.
No apologies needed.
But this council, Mr. Fritz, will make its own rules and regulations, not by what the law director suggests. Well, you work for us.
And I'm working for you, sir.
You work for us, sir.
Okay, listen up.
I don't work for you.
I agree with you both that sometimes there needs to be explanations so that we don't have a lot of people wondering things. You scratched the surface, but, you know, at some point, you know, there's a time and place, too, so let's move on to the Miss Finance Director's report.
Honorable Mayor, members of council, our public, the Finance Director's report for tonight is first and foremost that the Finance Department staff and Utility Department staff this week has worked extremely hard. This morning, we have received multiple calls from employees. Again, we do take it extremely serious with our accounting, to make sure our public employees are paid to the very penny that is due to them. We take this duty very seriously. Our employees were actually paid 100% accurately- Our employees were actually paid 100% accurately today. They did receive the amount that was due to them. It was an electronic transaction issue. It's a accounting software program that the bank uses. It's called Payson. I'm very familiar with that program because I've helped train other businesses using that program with my previous job before here. So we noticed on yesterday morning immediately there was an issue. Contacted the bank before they knew there was an issue. But the manner was handled very professionally by the bank. There's no problem. But I just want to let you know that our department handled the matter immediately. We've been answering all of our employees' questions and we take this matter very seriously. But I do want to thank, and the entire department and staff needs to be recognized for their hard work today. In addition, today we have received news about the National Dog Foundation Board met and made a decision to approve a matching grant for $2,500 for a dog for a community. So that was just, I want to recognize Officer Steve Leiden. He did ask for some assistance with this grant going to this board. He worked really hard. And this community owes him some recognition for this matching grant. Also on grants, the Nature Works Grant that was applied last year, the city has received it. We have issued a purchase order to Game Time as the vendor. We have drawings, I meant to bring the drawings today to show you. There is going to be a tiger monument for the kids to actually climb on. There's going to be a multiple slide unit, multiple swing sets, a balancing beam. The goal is to get this in place by the last Friday in April to be installed. It's going to be installed right behind the pavilions and near the restroom at the park. In addition to the Ohio checkbook, we have been working on this as a tremendous file. It takes approximately 20 to 25 hours of my time to redact the file. I have been reviewing the file line by line because we cannot violate Ohio Vice Code and send out confidential information. The goal is to get the file to the State Treasurer's Office by no later than February 29th. And then it'll be up to the State Treasurer's Office to upload the file online to the website. I also have included our financial report for the month of January. We are balanced, we're doing well. Obviously, it's too extremely early to project the revenues expenses because we're just in the first month. That concludes my report.
Ms. Hannah, I want to commend you too, because I would say this. Everybody has payroll bludges. It's the norm in business, you know, things happen like that. You corrected it right away. To me, it's a non-issue and I commend you for that. That's the first thing. The second thing was, you know, you don't get a lot of credit or praise for what you do because you're down in the trenches with these folks over there at the annex doing things like, you know, dog park, getting a dog and the Game Time playground equipment. So I just want to tell you publicly here that we appreciate you. You're doing a great job. And this just confirms that when we hired you, we made the right choice.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else have anything for our Finance Director, Mr. Bariak?
We'll still be having the Finance Report as part of the meeting, right? And you will be able to take questions? Will she be able to take questions?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Okay, anybody else? No, okay. Changes to the agenda?
I'd like to put a motion on there to support Park and Rec and their future decision-making or discussion and discovery.
Second. Any, or any discussion on that?
Is he going to discuss that right now, his motion?
No, number seven, John.
You're adding it?
Yes.
Okay. You will explain it then?
We'll discuss it then.
You will?
Yeah.
Because you sponsored it.
Okay, you're putting it on there then? Okay. Do we need a roll call on that or no?
Bariak.
Yes.
Waddell.
Yes.
Bray Meyer.
Yes.
Alberini.
Yes.
Savet.
Yes.
Okay, any other changes to the agenda? Okay, approval of the previous minutes for the February 3 regular meeting?
So moved.
Roll call.
Waddell. Bray Meyer. Alberini.
Yes.
Savet.
Yeah. Bariak. It's name, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's right.
Bariak. Bray Meyer.
Here's Zayet.
Sorry, that's my fault. I caught myself.
All right. Public hearings.
Ordinance 202005, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a lease agreement with a heritage accord for the Newton Falls Community Center.
So moved.
No, no, that's just a public hearing. Sorry.
Yes, if there's anyone wishing to be recognized with regard to that.
If they'd like to be recognized on this topic?
Katie Carl, 128 West Corey. I'm glad that there is an agreement on the floor to be considered and that this is finally in motion in the right direction, going in the right direction. Somebody was chosen, something is finally going to be done. And I hope that this, this does pass tonight so that something can get moving on this and that everybody backs them, okay? And supports this and moves in the right direction. Thank you.
Okay, going unfinished business.
Anybody else wish to speak?
Sea Harbor, 128 West Corey. I just want to commend all the people sitting in this row for all the hard work and all the crap they've had to deal with over the past year just trying to get it done for everyone in Newton Falls. So I think you guys deserve some serious round of applause. You're welcome.
All right, anybody else?
You should then, leave the public hearing closed if there's no one else.
Okay, if nobody else, then the public hearings are closed then? Okay, unfinished business?
Ordinance 202005, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a lease agreement with a heritage accord for the Newton Falls Community Center.
Can I just motion to suspend possible? Because I would like to bring Connie up to talk about the.
Wait until we put it on the floor?
I didn't know if we want to do that before or after.
We put it on the floor.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
No.
No.
They'll vote on the motion person.
No. You just put it on the floor so you want to.
Okay. Can I make a motion to suspend the rules of council?
Second.
Okay, roll.
This is the role to suspend the rules.
Yes.
Bray Meyer.
Yes.
Alberini.
Yes.
Savet.
Yes.
Bariak. Waddell.
Yes.
Can we get representatives from the foundation to come up and just briefly?
Heritage Accord, he means.
Heritage Accord, I'm sorry, thank you. Come up and just briefly go over this. Well, just, I wanted for my benefit, because I don't know if I haven't heard it directly from you guys yet, is, you know, I see that you guys want to renovate the building. But, you know, what does the after look like? You know, what kind of events are you guys going to have? You know, that kind of stuff. So I just, you know.
Heritage Accord was specifically formed to renovate and preserve the building.
Okay.
At the end of that, the city still owns the building. And we will be involved in choosing the right person or group with the experience and knowledge to make that building profitable with events. Our donors are going to want, our major donors are going to want longevity. They're going to want to know that their donations are being invested in a long-term project. And we will work with the city in identifying the correct route to move forward with the building. We're not able to, right now, the task before us is huge. It will take some time to put some planning together. We'll have engineers in the building. There has to be a historic study done, approval on the state level of anything that we do because it's on the national register. And of course, we'll be working with Mr. Lynch on those plans as well. So the process is going to be quite extensive just to get the renovations done. And I don't know if we've talked about this or you're aware, but we will not start any phase of the building renovations until we have the money in hand. So at the end of the day, the building will be run by someone that's hopefully has the experience and knowledge of those types of things. Events, right now, I know the public is interested in knowing whether the doors are going to be open right away. That is not going to happen. What you'll see probably is people coming and going evaluating the building. We probably will have some fundraising events there. But the building will not be used by the general public or rented out until all the life safety issues are done and the building is stable. And maybe before the whole project is complete. But we just don't know until we get a contractor in there and engineers in there and they give us the plan.
Would you say a longer vision is more preserving the building, A? And then, B, if the events you're going to have there would align with that? Or would you say preserving the building and then you're going to just open it back up to the general public for rentals?
No, I see the, and Mr. Lynch and I have talked about this. I see that the building have its own events, art events, music, shows, plays, that type of thing.
Mr. Waddell.
I don't know who to ask this to, maybe it's to you. I did get a call about the lease. And the question was, in the third paragraph, the tenant each acknowledging further agreement upon refinements may or will be required. And the question was, what refinements or what repairs and that, you know, who's going to identify, who's going to sign off on what has been repaired or needs repaired or fixed? And that was just, it's very kind of vague.
Paragraph numeral three?
No, the third one down, it says whereas heritage accord is provided to city Newton Falls. On the first page.
Oh, I see, okay.
It says that the each acknowledging further agreed upon refinements. You know, there's a lot that needs to be done over there. Who's going to decide what needs to be done and what has to be done? That was his question.
Yeah. I guess we're in a state of suspension, right? So I can respond to that. Yeah, that's the reason why Heritage Accord was selected, because of the expertise. The team that Connie has put together includes people with historical architectural knowledge. And the theory was, I'm not equipped as city manager to say what those refinements ought to be. But I wanted to make sure we had a team in place that did have that expertise and knowledge. When she talked about engineers, she was also talking about architects. And I refer to this specific area of study, which is historical architecture. And so I'm counting on Heritage Accord. And based on what some of her team members have done in the past, I think you'll be very pleased that they've got the right people to put in that condition. So the answer is, we've got the right people to give those answers.
May I add something else, sir? Any major alterations they have passed their initial submission to the city manager has to be reviewed by the city manager. Again, he can unreasonably withhold them wanting to make changes. But there's going to be constant communication. And we have the right to make sure, for lack of a better word, there's no permanent damage to the building that hurts the city on top of what the insurance rates are. So we have information, it says that any repairs or alterations that have not been in your initial report to them has to go in front of the city manager for review.
That was just his question. I said I agree, so I guess.
Sure.
Bray Meyer.
After you have renovated the building, okay? And the next phase is for, to start using the building. How long is it that you folks are going to have control over that building? And what is going to be done in there?
Right now, we'll have control of the building until all the renovations are complete.
Okay, but after the renovations?
Then they'll be in negotiation and trying to identify the right person or group that has the experience and knowledge on how to run a community center or art center or whatever we decide to call it. Because it's in our vested interest. We will continue to raise money on an annual basis. We want the building to be sustainable. So initially, I don't know the first year it runs or second year it runs. It may not be, I don't know.
Mm-hmm.
That just remains to be seen. And I think that will develop probably during the last phase that we have in our proposal. We have three phases that we've outlined. I don't know what the engineers and the architects are going to tell us. But close to the end of the project, we'll start talking about how to transition the building.
Yeah, that would be my only, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. My only concern is, after it's all renovated, I mean, when's it going to be before our people, our foundation can be involved in what goes on in there? And, I mean, how long are you folks going to have control of that building, forever?
Not forever, no.
You know?
We're here to renovate and preserve.
Five years afterwards.
Well, the lease says five years initially with automatic three-year renewals.
Okay, all right.
Mrs. Talcott, and I would like to address the city manager on this. We had the DeSaville Corporation come in, consultants come in and go over the building. Can I say to you that, from what I'm hearing tonight, and if I'm wrong, please correct me, that the building will be safe before anybody goes through it?
Before anyone goes through it?
I mean, before anybody, before it's open to the public.
Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Some fundraising listeners to go through.
I have a second, sir.
So to Connie's point of the renewals, I thought I had mentioned something about having some restriction in for renewals that it's got to be agreed upon by the L C as well?
Yeah, that's.
Or the lease or, I'm sorry.
You did make that request. And I confirmed with Ms. Talcott. And because of the fact that they're going to be making such a significant investment, she did not want to, and I don't blame her, to have the renovation of the community center become a political football again. So she said, please don't put that in there. And, by the way, I understand and respect the reason that you had that. But I want to make sure the city has a dance partner, has enough confidence and their opportunity to follow through on this thing. So I did not put that clause in there, council.
And then, just something that she said, that I think somebody else said that, and want to make sure is on the record, that the city will not be retaining ownership of the building. That the CIC will be retaining ownership. And as we are part of the CIC, we hold an interest in that. But we will not be holding the interest in the building.
From a very technical standpoint, that's right. Yeah, that's absolutely right. But the CIC is an arm of the city, so, but, yes.
But we don't currently have a city council member sitting on the CIC as well, which puts us in a very precarious situation in terms of. I realize that, but that's why I wanted to make sure I asked that question.
And I will get back to council with reference. There may be some changes in composition in order to satisfy that.
Thank you. I had some other stuff, sorry, went through all this. Conflicts, because we will have potentially soccer fields in the back. What is the resolution for conflicts of parking and that kind of stuff over at that facility? I didn't, I didn't know if it was in the lease. I might have missed that somewhere.
Well, yeah, there is a provision that talks about that. But primarily, it's a matter of, it allows some flexibility, some working between the city manager's office and heritage accord in order to resolve those conflicts on a regular basis. Per your request, we did put a clause in there for official municipal meetings as long as they didn't conflict with something that had been a long time scheduled. So it's not a difficult calendar to manage. But just keep in mind one of the things that Ms. Talcott said, which is that the objective is to get this thing restored first. Don't put the cart before the horse.
I realize that. But we should enumerate, you know, parking as well. I realize that, but we should enumerate, you know, parking as well. I mean, because they're, number five?
Number five.
Thanks. Okay.
Well, here, let me make a commitment to you, councilman, in that regard. Look, I started the effort to make sure we brought back our community center again because it's loved in this community. There's great affection for it, and almost every other person you talk to in this community can tell you about some important event in their life that took place at the community center. So, my intention and the reason that I retain as a city manager the right to administer this contract is my intention, and I've been in that building many, many times, and I'm going to bird dog this thing. That's one of the reasons I've been, if you take a look at my contract, well, the elements of my contract to city manager is to administer contracts. That doesn't just mean signing the contract. That means making sure the contract is fulfilled in a way that's to the best benefit of the citizens. That means insisting that parking matters get resolved away that's fair to the citizens to the extent that they occur. But, this group from Heritage Accord, they're a team that's interested in creating restoration under the concept that while the restoration's taking place, that any of the external areas are not going to be prohibited or barred for municipal use to the extent that it comes up, but we're going to have to talk about it. And so, essentially, what you're, to some extent, approving is that there's a new team being created. Team consists of the city manager's office and the folks at Heritage Accord, and we've got to get you across the goal line. I think that we can, and we're just looking for the chance to do it.
Can I ask a question, Walter? How can we as the city authorize a lease by, with the C I C, with another third party? Wouldn't the C I C board approve that lease with the third party and not the city?
We just create the articles of incorporation for the C I C. The C I C now then creates their own rules and purposes, and they haven't proclamated that yet. So, that's the next step. Again, you're a step ahead of us. And again, I understand your question, is our first C I C opportunity?
Yeah.
Any opportunity comes out, well, we're aboard and all the rules in place, and then everything's much around.
Mr. Chairman, can I be heard on this issue? I want to make sure that this part was very clear. The lease is going to be between the C I C and Heritage Accord. However, I wanted to make sure there was legislative approval of the lease that the C I C is entering into with Heritage Accord. In other words, so that the C I C couldn't just say, hey, well, we'll do any lease we want to. Now, we've got control over the property, we'll do any lease we want to. No, I didn't want that. I wanted to make sure every single member of the city council had a chance to approve that agreement, so that if this doesn't get approved tonight, the C I C cannot enter into the agreement with Heritage Accord. In other words, the document that you've had and the public has had examined on its website, been circulated all over town, is the very document to which Heritage Accord must agree. So, I think that sort of puts it in context, councilman, so that the point was to make sure that you approve two things. One, the lease terms itself, so you knew it was fair to the city. And secondly, that you approve that the C I C enter into that lease. So, as far as those lease terms are concerned, the C I C is not an independent body. They can't approve anything that's one word different from what's attached to your legislation tonight.
I make a motion, we go back to session.
Yeah, I got two more.
The C I C, we'll still retain, even if with the C I C in it, we'll still retain our, it's our building though, right?
Yes.
That's, okay.
Yes.
That's what I read, but I want to stand corrected if it's not.
You won it.
Okay, thank you.
Joe, what is the city administrative code 151.01? That's going to be declared null and void? I should have looked that up myself, I'm sorry.
I can respond to that. I'm the one that put that clause in there. The city's administrator has an administrative code that had no clause in it talking about the way the city operates the community center. And I realized that if we didn't get rid of that, we were creating a strange dichotomy where we had a lease agreement with Heritage Accord, and yet this old piece of legislation that existed from years, years ago, when the city was operating the community center, would make it impossible for the lease to go into place. So, I put a disintegration clause into the contract.
Okay.
James, you have one more?
No, not this time.
We have a motion to go back into regular rules.
Second.
Okay, Alberini, Waddell, roll call.
Alberini?
Yes.
Sivette?
Yes.
Berriac?
Yes.
Waddell?
Ray Meyer?
Yes.
Okay, now, after all that, are we on unfinished business or are we on new business?
Yeah, we are back to voting on that ordinance.
You just went back into regular session, now you got to vote on it.
Okay.
Ready? Sivette?
No.
Berriac?
Yes.
Waddell?
Yes.
Ray Meyer?
Yes.
Alberini?
Yes.
Okay, passes. All right, new business.
Ordinance 202007, an ordinance amending ordinance 201409, an ordinance establishing pay rates for certain employees of the city of Newton Falls.
Sumut.
Do we have any discussion on that?
Does anybody want an explanation, or should we just keep moving?
I was going to ask for that. I could tell what that is. This is what we, part of this is clarifying, would you please weigh in on this?
Yeah, no, no, you're right. It was clarifying the ordinance that was passed at the previous meeting. Bill George stood at that podium two weeks ago and said, the part-time meter readers, in order for us to attract them, need to have competitive pay, and then, in order to make sure that they come back the next month, need to have the opportunity to provide some additional labor to the city for two more weeks out of the month. And that makes sense, because who's going to take a job where it's only five days out of a month? So, Mr. George asked you to pass it, everybody said that's a great idea, it's fantastic. And then, I realized, in confering with the law director, that a meter reader and a laborer are two different creatures of government, and that the legislation you passed would have meant that you'd have been at the appropriate pay for meter reader, and then at a lower pay, when the next two weeks came along, you did the additional labor work for the electric department. So, this sets the laborer pay at the exact same rate as the meter readers, so that we can comply with the legal requirements of municipal government.
What I wasn't aware of last week, it slipped by me, and I'm not against the police department, but there was added in there that the part-timers are going to get from 16 to 18. I wanted to ask a question on the floor. Wasn't last year, didn't we go, didn't we go up to 1475 for them?
I don't remember. I believe that we did, but I guess I'll address this in this fashion. The increase in the part-time police officer's pay to a range of 16 to 18 was in the legislation this council voted on. I understand that everybody was focusing on that, but that was in the legislation. And I will tell you that one of the major reasons for that was, if we're going to be paying our laborers who are sweeping floors and gathering materials over the electric department a particular rate, I'll be darned if I'm going to have my police officers who are strapping on a gun, putting on a bulletproof vest, exposing their lives out on the street to be getting paid the same amount of money as our regular part-time laborers are getting. In fact, the range from 16 to 18, although it's a positive move in the right direction, I still don't think it's high enough for people that are in law enforcement. I frequently have the opportunity to work late at night in this building, and I'm usually the only one here, except for, I see the police coming and going, grabbing criminals, processing them, going out in the streets, doing the things that have to be done in the dark of night where everybody else puts their head on the pillow. And the fact that the range is now meant as a result of that, from 16 to $18, a new range of 16 to 18. Look, I know that we have to believe in competitive markets, and there are many municipalities that are paying police officers low rates, but that doesn't mean that should be a reflection of what we think about our police officers. Our crime statistics are showing a continual decrease in crime, continual positive apprehensions and education, and I'll put our police department up against any, I'm not trying to be overly defensive about it, but the fact is that that was in the legislation you passed, that's not even on the floor tonight, but I hope that you'll at least solve this labor problem.
Uh-oh, have a second. I wanted the public to know that I'm not, I'm not against the police, but here's the thing, Mr. Lynch, what about our full-timers? Everybody got a 1% raise, we addressed it. In other words, this is a dollar 10 cents by the time they got the 1% raise, which is about 14.75 cents, 15, 1475 to 1490, that's a dollar 10 jump. I don't think any of our other full-timers got that. I just say, you know, somewhere, we have to draw the line. Now, I'm not going to, like you say, there's a lot of people that pay their part-timers a lot less than us, and there's even some big cities that pay their full-timers to start less than us. But, I'm saying, what I'm trying to say is, are we being fair to the whole, all the employees in the village?
Well, I think so. The full-timers are still being paid more than the part-timers after you pass this tonight, or after the passage last time. So, yes, we are. In a perfect world, every teacher makes $100,000 because they take care of our children, and every police officer makes $100,000 because they protect our lives. We're not in a perfect world, but at least we can strive to get close to something that reflects our own value of these people.
Any further discussion before we roll call? No. Roll call.
Berriac?
Yes.
Waddell?
Yes.
Ray Meyer?
Yes.
Alberini?
Yes.
Sivette?
Yes.
Passes.
Resolution 072020, resolution directing the city manager to conduct a space utilization study in order to properly evaluate and make use of space for municipal functions, especially in light of the city's acquisition of the congregational church located in Newton Falls, Ohio.
Sumut.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I was the one who put this on council agenda, so I wanted to make sure the city manager had every available tool at his disposal when determining the utilization of the new space, but as well as the old spaces that we are vacating, and how we can either best utilize them within the city, leasing them or selling them or demoing them, depending on what David works together with a architect to determine the cost to renovate a space, and to work with other, with the court particularly for the space here, and depends on, so I wanted to have every available tool for him to do that, to bring back to council, so we could approve whatever that is.
Sure.
You know, because this isn't approving, we're going to sell this, we're going to lease this. It's just giving him the ability to work with architects, firms, to make sure, you know, he has all the resources available to bring that information back to us.
What is the utilization study going to be on for exactly? Then, please, could you explain that, Mr. Lynch?
Well, I might defer to the sponsor, the verbiage is right there on the ordinance, "Space utilization survey to include but unlimited properties located at 19 North Canal, 419 North, Center 36 Broad Street, 526 West Broad, report back to council his findings." So, my intention is to provide a report to you saying, what are we going to do with the space that we're not using and the space that we're acquiring? And what's, in other words, what's the game plan? It's not to establish that, as Councilman Sivette said, for me to establish that we're required to sell the annex to this buyer or do this to the roof of the annex or whatever. It's, it's to create a game plan, basically.
Are you going to do this, or are we hiring an outside portion?
My intention is to get this done myself, but I do have the opportunity to use our consulting engineer if I need him. And our consulting engineer, which is under contract approved by this body, is Thomas Falcon Associates. And I assure you that I don't need to spend a lot of outside money to get this job done.
Any further discussion? No. Roll call.
Waddell?
Yes.
Ray Meyer?
Yes.
Alberini?
Yes.
Sivette?
Yes.
Berriac?
Yes.
Okay, motion to have a cost benefit analysis of extending all city utilities run to the eastern gate of Camp Garfield.
Sumut.
Okay, any?
You have it here, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute.
Can I be recognized on this one? I actually placed this on the agenda as well. So, after having discussions with the base commander at Camp Garfield, he indicated that if we can at least get the utilities to the gate, that will at least allow them to have access and potentially more built out at the camp to give more utilities within there, because they said they were starving for utilities. So, this was just to see how, you know, is it even feasible to get it to the gate? We're not authorizing construction or anything, we just want to see if it's even feasible to get it to the gate at this point.
This is a perfect example of what we talked about yesterday in that economic development meeting. In order to qualify for any grants in the state of Ohio, you have to have an end user. And there's a ton of money out there for extension of utilities if you have an end user. Here's an end user. So, this might be something that we get our partners at Y S U to look at with the grants. Looking at the capital budget, there's about 318 million in the capital budget, although they haven't finished it yet, but this actually fits into the category that, you know, we can use, and E S K will probably help us with that. First of all, I'd like to ask, do we, did they come and ask us to provide them electricity? Or are we, do we know that they're going to be interested in? When Mr., excuse me, sir, let me finish.
Okay.
When Mr. Robinson, Colonel Robinson or Major Robinson came here, he said, "I can't control what bids of contracts will be going out and who does this and who doesn't. Can you assure me that we're going to get the work out there?" We have, we have people in this town that have had utilities extended to them for years, and we've been told, well, they have to pay for it themselves. Well, if we need grants, why can't we use our own people as extension tools? How many people are going to use this out there? And, but I mean, do we have some assurance that running poles out there is going to benefit the city of Newton Falls? I remember we got into another deal back in 92, running them out to Feist Hardwood, and we ended up losing money on that.
I believe the key words here in all this is benefit analysis, that I think that that's what we're making the motion for, is Mr. Sivette to look into it, that we're not agreeing on anything right now, but to look to say, you know, what would this cost and what, you know, what would it take and what would make sense?
Is it free? Is the cost analysis going to be free?
I wouldn't know that until they.
Actually, I don't, I know the answer to that, other than the fact that the cost benefit analysis, whole idea is to sort of answer your question. You just said, is it going to work out for us? Well, we don't know until we do an analysis of it.
Thomas, focus your time on this.
Yeah, so, probably it would be our consulting engineer.
In other words, we're, we're going to hope that we're not, we don't have any, nothing in our hand.
No, there's no guarantee whatsoever. No.
Okay, any other discussion before we do roll call?
I think it's a great idea. We've had numerous meetings out there with folks. Right now, they don't, they're not getting anything from Fordage County, and I think it just enhances Newton Falls' position with the base out there. I think they told us they're spending $30 million a year annually, is that what it was, roughly? They actually have to have, they're spending so much money out there on concrete, they need a private contractor to come in there and have their own cement batch plant on site.
And I think at the main gate, we have a hydrant at the main gate on 534. We have a sewer line at the, and on 534, on Ostera 5, so the extension would be short. The extension for the electric is something that I think you'd have to look at. That's something where I think you would need to do a real serious analysis with the first energy there and already having their three-phase dipholes out on the northwest corners out there in the three-phase.
there, and the three-phase going up 534. I, I think that, you know, that's something you would look at, because our, our three-phase stops down even south of Grant Street, so it would be a long run for us, and, but that's, that's what the analysis does.
I have a question for the law. Go ahead.
You know, there's been a lot of talk about the missile defense coming, and then it's not coming, and then it's coming, then we're hoping, and then the gentleman that was here speaking to us a couple weeks ago about the, the base out there and so forth, you know, and how he thinks it's going to grow, and there'll be more people there. And I just, I, we have a lot of stuff going on, we need to do in our community, and I just don't think we have the time, or whatever, to deal with something like that. When they can prove to us that we're going to absolutely get something that will help this community, I don't think we should go any further with something like that. That's just my opinion, thank you.
Now, a second, yes. When you asked me to vote for something, this council asked me to vote for something, what I'd like to see is, and I question this to the law director, even if we run the polls out there, wouldn't we still have to compete with whoever out there now? Would we be able to, would they be able to take us? Would they be able to offer us a contract? That's, I mean, it's all, what are the legal ramifications first, before we start a cost analysis? That's what I'm asking. Is that a good question, Joe, or am I getting the card in front of the wall?
For purposes of electricity, the State Public Utilities Commission has kind of separated all of the state. There's ways to modify that, but my guess is, I believe First Energy has that section within their, I'll use the word quadrant. We're limited where we can go out to. Now, we can make changes to that, and part of the cost benefits analysis here would be probably taking some of those legal fees and expenses, or determine whether or not we're the best provider. If we can show we're a better provider than them, that line can be changed. But the water and the sewage is not a problem, you know, we're the closest community, we can do it, no problem.
Yes, I agree, I agree with you. We have the sewer and water already at the corner. I can agree on that part, I'm just-
One final comment, and let's say, I have an answer to call for a vote. I, I hear this discussion, I think it's, it's well past time, and we're trying to do it on the economic side, it's to play offense, just gotta play offense. You can't, you can't live in a defeatist world and expect things just to fall into your lap. I think this is a great idea, Zach, and I think we need a vote on it right now, so. Thank you.
I think what we're, really, what we're doing is having Mr. Sevett spearhead looking to see if it's a great idea or not, so that we don't make a big mistake, or down the road a year from now, go and say, "Wow, why didn't we do that? If we would've known this, we missed out." So, you know, he's gonna look at all options and weigh the, you know, if it's good or not good, but, all right, no further discussion, roll call.
Bray Meyer.
No.
Alberini.
Yes.
Sevett.
Yes.
Bariak.
No.
Waddell.
Yes.
All right, passes. Motion to discuss submitting to the electors amendments to the charter, Article, what is it, six, board and commissions in reference to pay.
So moved. Can I be heard on this one?
Sure.
Thanks. So, for years, I have served, and I believe most of us sitting on council have served on commissions, and currently, they are all getting paid $10 per meeting, which I think is woefully low, in terms of our peers within Trumbull County. So, I would like to increase that somewhere $40, $50 range per meeting for those individuals, so we can, because we do have trouble from time to time filling some of these boards. I mean, that was one reason we reduced the park and rec board from five to three, is because we couldn't fill the boards. So, hopefully with increasing the dollar amount, we can get qualified people, and then more people as well, to help fill, fill these boards.
What's your baseline, 40 to 40?
40 to 50.
For-
Yes.
Gotcha. I believe that's what we paid at Warren Hatch a few years ago.
Yeah.
For people on the zoning commission and the stuff I got, so. That was 20 years ago, even.
Yeah.
I'm getting old, man.
Excuse me, Mr. Sevett.
Yes.
We had a man here that applied for civil service, that didn't want a raise, didn't want $40 to $50 a meeting, and you put a motion on the floor reconsider letting a man that wanted to step up. Maybe, I don't wanna be facetious, or, make it $500, I bet you have him lining up from here down to the bridge tomorrow. Public service is what it is. And I was the first one, and I have to say, the mayor went along with me, I mean, excuse me, the ex-mayor, Mr. Waddell, when it came time for the charter review, he was against pay raises for the village officials. Am I correct, Mr. Waddell?
I don't remember, John.
Let's stay on task here.
Yeah, I don't remember.
Let's stay on task here. I have the problem myself personally.
I've been counseled, you're against that.
People take time out of their day, they've got families and things like that. Most, most families have a husband, wife, girl, and it's economy. So, $40, $50, I'm perfectly okay with. And then you'll get some, you know, you will, to John's point, you will get some people who will perk up their antennas and say, "I might be interested in doing that."
Okay, any, maybe there's two matters. There's two things I'd like to bring up. One is, if you look to our charter for both civil service and planning, it's listed $10 maximum, $100 a year. Park or rec is $10, maximum $150 per year. So, we changing two sections of each one of those. Second of all, you're not changing them yet. All you're doing is saying it's gonna go to the voters for submission. This is a charter, you don't change it. You just tell the Board of Elections to put it on for the voters to make the change to the charter. So, your voting does not change it yet. It just says, "We want this council to get on the Board of Elections to put on the ballot whether or not you wanna make those changes." So, I'm suggesting, if you say $40 or $50, we need kind of, we need six changes. For civil service, need a dollar amount and a, a max. For planning, a dollar amount, monthly, per meeting, and a max. And park recreation, an hourly plus the max. Well, that doesn't happen, Max, for the winner. I mean, it's not moving to $50, they have all the max, they've got too many to run.
I'm saying, take it out.
Yeah, you either have to take it out.
Consideration.
Oh, I see, yeah. Take out the max.
Do you wanna do now?
Because you don't have any news at the moment.
He might want the language, I don't know. Do you want the language changed, Joe?
Do you wanna change it, then bring it back to next meeting?
If, if you would want to table, it would be a significant change for me to come back and give you each one of those with a modification. I will use the word $30, but then you can make an argument about what that total is, and I will, I will put in a blank for the maximum.
Okay.
This is just a motion to discuss it, so it's not really the motion to submit to the Board of Elections.
Oh, my apologies, you're right, this is discussion section. You don't have to go on any. If you wish, if you wish to add this matter, you can direct me, I'll bring some to the next meeting, for the actual language that you might have to submit to the Board of Elections.
What, what, excuse me, Mr. Fritz, what are we saying right now?
I was already gone. You're just, you're discussing it now. I guess what Mr. Sevett is suggesting is, how about if we bring, if we have me draft specific language, I'll have it for your packets next time, and I will leave blank the month, the meeting, per meeting amount, and the other ones, so we're seeing exactly what part we're changing. And then if there's a specific things you wanna change, then you can discuss it that day. That would be satisfactory to council, we can have Sevett for the next meeting.
To discuss this, how many votes does this take?
If it's on the agenda, it would be three, but again, it doesn't get passed, it just does, it goes on the election for charter modification. Doesn't change the charter. Is that how you wanna handle it, council?
Well, we better vote on it.
I'll present next time.
So, we have this open motion, though, to make this discussion that we never voted on.
There's nothing to vote on. Motion's there.
Yeah. It already discussed.
Yeah. There's nothing to vote on. So, there's no further discussion, move to the next section.
Okay.
Number five. Excuse me, are we voting to table it?
No, voting on anything right now. We're gonna, we're gonna move to the next. I would suggest we move to the next number five, because this is discussion, not specific legislation we're voting on. Yeah, you're right.
Motion to discuss and consider the following changes to the rules of council. Want me to read all three of them, or take them one at a time, or what do we wanna do?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just discuss, and don't put the motion on. Yeah.
Section, what is that, 11?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Order of business reports, council and mayor shall submit written reports prior to the meeting.
So moved.
No.
Oh, sorry.
All right, read all three of them, and then make the motions.
There's really no motion. Again, this is something that I've not done before, it's been suggested we try, et cetera. And we wanna bring up topics for council to speak amongst themselves, in order to direct the staff on how to prepare for the legislation or specific motions. What Mr. Sevett had asked about a month ago is, is these two or three changes we wanna make, how we get it on the floor. We went back and said, "We'll just put it on the agenda for discussion." We use the word "motion" to discuss, we probably don't need the word "motion" to. Just, in the future, we're just gonna put in "discussion" to the topic. What he's suggesting is, is on these three different matters, he wishes council to give some input now, since you had it in your packet, on what you thought of those ideas, and then get us to a spot where either he can direct us how he wants to proceed with the motion, or we put a motion on the next, on whatever agenda you wish to have it on. So, to answer the question, there's no vote necessary, it's just an open discussion on these three matters.
Okay.
You're saying, Mr. Fritz, we, the motion's on the floor to discuss, excuse me, let me read to you.
There's no motion.
There's no motion.
We're just discussing the three topics.
Could I ask a question before? You are sponsoring this, Mr. Sevett?
There's nothing to sponsor.
There's nothing to sponsor.
Who put it on?
I put it on for discussion, not, not for any-
You put it, did you direct Kathy to put it on?
Yes.
All right, and Mr. Fritz was aware of it?
Yes.
All right, well, then, you, you put it on.
Correct.
Didn't come out of thin air?
No, no.
All right, well.
Okay, you wanna leave-
Never cast your pearls before the swine.
We don't need three votes to put this on, that we can be able to do-
We're not voting on anything.
Excuse me, then we're not gonna talk about it at all, none of these.
It's a business meeting, and what has happened, it's, I don't know why it's never happened before, but sometimes council members have issues they wanna bring forth to the other council members, and you can't do it by communication ahead because of sunshine laws. So, Mr. Sevett had some issues he decided he thought the council should look at. He didn't say whether he's necessarily, this is what he wants, or how he wants to get council's input on these ideas he has. So, if you were to take, under number five, the word "motion to" out of your head, just discussion and consider the following changes, we're asking to have an open discussion where the mayor, as chair, would say, "It's open for discussion," you would do it, have conversations about it, and then at some point, close and move to the next session. Next section.
For example, what are your thoughts on having pre-written reports for the mayor's report or the council report? Anybody to like, dislike?
Actually, I can make a quick comment there. In prior council action, in March of 2019, the council actually approved having written reports for all of its boards, so this is actually just cleaning up council race.
Well, I, I, I thought we needed three votes to put any type, to discuss it, but I do know, under amendments, modifications, and suspensions, council by any time by two-thirds majority vote, renew, amend, modify, or suspend these rules to establish rules that may need necessary to conduct its business. Does that have anything to do with it?
On the vote?
That would be the vote, right?
There's, there's, there's no action right now, this is just discussion, to see if Mr. Bariak, Ms. Bray Meyer likes the idea of, ahead of time, writing your, your report, or if you prefer to come in and discuss, or, that's, that's really all we're doing right now.
Well, I'm not gonna make a motion and suspend the rule if you wanna talk about it all, since we're just gonna talk about it, I guess.
Do we have a second?
Do we need to suspend the rule, Joe? It's up to you guys, what you want to suspend or not.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rule, if we, you wanna discuss it, right?
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Alberini.
Yes.
Sevett.
Yes.
Bariak.
Yes.
Waddell.
Yes.
Bray Meyer.
Yes.
All right, first one. Council and mayor shall submit written reports prior to the meeting. What are the council's thoughts on this?
So, like I said, in March 18th of 2019, council had previously passed a motion that all committees were to supply a written report and have it on file, I believe.
Did you say committees?
Yes. I will find the motion, so I can read it directly from the-
I remember.
Oh, thank you. So, there was a motion that, there was a, okay, sorry. The approved motion was to include all committees submit a written report monthly, and that was passed 5-0 in 2019.
Excuse me. What was the vote, sir?
5-0.
5-0?
Yep. Not sure. So, this is just-
I remember.
So, this is just cleaning of council rules. From a previously passed motion.
Well, that says to Sevett a written-
Report.
Report. It doesn't say you can't do it verbally, either. I, I think the problem is, if you only do things written, the public will never know what you're doing.
Right, exactly.
Because, you know, if I submit my written report to the clerk, somebody's gonna ask for it, but those, of all those people, there's a lot of people watching the meeting, they're not gonna know what anybody's talking about. I don't have any problems submitting written reports, they talked about that, but I still think the council needs to talk about what's going on at the committees on the floor, that's what they do, and it's what they're here for. Submitting just a written report with no oral reports, I think, nobody's gonna know what's going on. And then, you know, you talk about being authentic, being transparent, I said, they're not gonna know, so.
Right.
Ms. Bray.
I agree with the councilman, Waddell. I believe that everything should be spoken in front of these people. You know, we don't need to be writing things down and putting it in law that you said this, or you didn't say that. And I just think that the way we're doing it is fine, the way we've been doing it is fine, and it should not be changed. Thank you.
I, I remember when this came up. Now, we've sort of fallen away from it. I believe myself that it's redundant, we discuss our activities in a meeting, and it's in the minutes. This is also, public can hear us. We don't need no more, we don't need any, we don't need more work, rules in the charter are, you know what I mean?
I think you made that motion, though, to do the-
Oh, well, maybe I, yeah, and I don't know what the reasoning was at that time, but we've let it fall behind. If you wanna make a written report, no one stopped you.
I agree, I think, I think it's fine to make, in fact, at the end of the year, you have to submit a written report for your, for the whole year.
Yes.
Yeah.
Anything else on number one?
Other thoughts, comments? Wanna move into number two, or?
Yeah, please.
All right. Section 11 and 12, order of business, first public comment, says to remove the restriction limiting this to items identified on the agenda, so you can talk about anything, and remove the final public comments. So, get rid of the second one, and put them all into one. Thoughts, pro or against? Mr. Waddell?
I wanna go back one second to the written reports, I was looking for this earlier. Under the rules of council, under council committees, it states, "No committee report may be forwarded to council unless the committee has first met and authorized said report."
And that's where we got into before. You know, if you don't have a, a written report, and then you don't submit, you know, if you had a meeting this week, then you write your report. Technically, by the rules, you can't submit it anyway, because you haven't had a meeting to go over the report that you wrote. And that's what the rules say, you have to have the committee authorize the report you're going to submit. And we ran into, that's what the problem is.
Okay.
Can you read that a little bit louder, bud?
Sure.
We're on the second one now.
Yeah, it says, section eleven and twelve, order of business, first public comment, remove the restriction limiting this to items identified on the agenda, and remove the final public comments. So an explanation here of what it's talking about is to get rid of the second public comments that's wide open, and put it all into one at the very beginning that's wide open, that you can talk about anything, even if it's not on the agenda.
Uh, under this, now, Mr. Alberini, do you want to, do you want to re-recognize your...
Well, a couple, thanks, John. A couple things on this one. As I've said about a zillion times, and probably too many, my, my background is a township of Rusty. You know, we allow the citizens to get up and speak, which is their right, you can talk about anything that you want to talk about, as long as it's based on the business of that community. And I think sometimes, in times past here, this is my sixth year on council in Newton Falls, we've had some individuals come up and, and, and say not-so-nice things to us, which had nothing to do with the business of Newton Falls. So I'm kind of, I'm kind of, I understand what Zach's trying to do, and it's not to take away from what the taxpayers are saying, but you know something? I think ourselves, as elected officials, deserve a little bit more respect than people coming up to the podium and saying things towards us that really don't have anything to do with the business of Newton Falls.
Let me add a comment on that real quick, like, if you don't mind. My own thoughts there, for the, the little bit of time restraints, I don't like the idea of taking anything away, if it's always been something, and you have a lot of people in, in the community, we like to be transparent. If something shifted like that, to get the idea that you're, we're silencing them and such, that I, I like to give them, and that's why I discuss going door-to-door, having meetings here, there, and as much as I can to, as you brought up, to hear the heartbeat of the community, but the other end of it, when I ran for mayor, I promised civility in the meetings, and I, it didn't just mean on this side of the table. I agree with you a hundred and ten percent, that I don't believe that there's a person sitting up here that doesn't care for their community, and doesn't have the best interest for the community, so I feel that that's part of my job, to make sure that we give citizens as much time to speak as possible, but not doing so in a way that you demean anybody up here, you're not calling names or anything like that, and, like I've said, I, I won't have that.
Second address, if I could, Mr. Mayor. A couple months ago, we had an individual come up here, I won't mention no names, because I have a little too much class to say anything. Individual comes up to the podium, podium and says, you guys are embarrassing.
I can promise you that won't happen anymore.
Now, what did that have, sorry, but what did that have to do with us being a city councilman? You know? And I, and I'll go one step further. We're embarrassing, but the majority of the people in Newton Falls elected us to be, to make these decisions on behalf of the community, whether you like us or not. Now, me, myself and I, you know, when someone comes up, I mean, I'm a big boy, I can take that, but that's, that's really, it's, for people to say stuff like that on the city, on the city news channel, whatever, it just, it's just totally classless. That's happened several times, Mr. Mayor, so that was my point, to make the comments I made.
Okay. Mr. Bariak?
Mr. Fine, I agree with you. Look, you have the gavel. If somebody comes up here and you say that at the beginning of every meeting, if they use profane language, blah, 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 get off that, but on the first part, our first thing is, stick to items on the agenda. They can't come up here and talk about the snowfall and everything else. Why are we limiting the people's right to speak and say what they feel? It's the American way. We're elected officials, we're supposed to have tough skin. If they get on us too bad, we're, we're, uh, we can, you can stop that. I, I'll tell you an easy way. This council would want to agree. We're not, we're not to argue tit for tat. We should give the public more time to speak, as long as, as long as it's the American way. I don't, I don't control, if they want to say JB Bariak is rotten and no good, that's their right. As a matter of fact, there's people that did things to me the last election that came out with all, all, all lies, and I have a tough time suing them, because I'm a public official. I was told, save your money, John, you're not going to win the case, you're going to spend a lot of money.
Well, I, I, I appreciate the, the people coming and giving their two cents, and instead of being armchair quarterbacks and sitting at home and, and not saying anything, but there's an appropriate way of doing so. If I have a question, no matter what it is in the community, I, I know that individuals are, are better than coming and doing so in a way of slamming anybody up here, and it's just, it's just not necessary to, you know, to, to demean yourself or anybody up here. I don't, I don't think any of you deserve that, yeah.
I, I just don't think it's right, you can't take people's rights away. They have a right to speak, that's the whole deal, it's our First Amendment right.
Actually, I want to correct on this point, that under the Ohio sunshine laws, we are not required to provide public comment at any meeting. We do that as a courtesy to the citizens of Newton Falls, but we are not required to do that, other than providing it under public hearings.
You know, excuse me, excuse me, Mrs. Savette, I respect you, and no, nothing disparaging to you, but to want to change council rules, you sponsoring this stuff, you've chosen not to even run, and to make these rules for council right now, I, I guess, I mean, you're allowed to, no, you're allowed to, but you know what I mean? I wonder what, can I ask your reason?
It's personal.
Why is your reason? You... John, that sounded... Oh, I'm sorry. I, I mean, it's disparaging.
Well, either, either way, right now, what we're doing is, we're discussing, you know, we don't, we don't, you know, if we like it or not like it. And the fact of the matter is, you had talked about what the sunshine law says, what, um, what you have to, and I believe that our way of looking at it is not the limited amount what we have to, but we, I think it's a good idea to go above and beyond, like Mrs. Braymire said, that you don't have to do this, and as I said, as, as mayor, and not just myself, but I know council people do the same thing, I don't have to go knocking on doors and asking individuals, hey, do you think this is a good idea to move into this building? Hey, do you think this is a good idea? What should we do this? Don't have to, but what individuals sit down at their thinks and believes, and their ideas are very important to us, and I, I believe, that I think that we need to raise the bar a little bit, and, you know, mend some old fences, and, you know, unite together as a community, and do it in an appropriate way. Mr. Bariak?
I was just trying to say, I would replace it with community events. I don't ever, I've been on the council enough with quite a, it's my second term, I don't remember anybody, city manager has done a lot of it, and the mayor about the basketball game, and even, I've been asked tonight, and I'll save it for the, at the end of comments, about the fish fryer.
Right.
I was asked to, you know, to promote the boosters. No one's ever stopped anybody from stopping a community event or saying something. We're talking about somebody's being able to come up here and question, or if they didn't know what we did and how we voted, and then express their opinion, they're disappointed, or whatever, or did we ever think of this or that? I'm not, maybe we ought to give them an extra two minutes. John, I, I think you misunderstood that, because it's, it's not to stop talking about community events, it's only to talk about community events.
I know that.
Well, I, what I was thinking is...
We're making a special place for it, though, right?
Well, I'm just saying, what if you, what if you have something that's going on out in Lake Milton, that might be, you know, a benefit to this community, or something going on, and you want to talk about it, that kind of stops that.
Who ever stopped anybody from talking about it?
No, 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 I just said, if you, you put that in there, no one's ever stopped anybody. All I'm saying is, if, if you look at the way it's written, if you're talking about something other than a community event, you can't do that. And you might want to talk about something that's going on somewhere else, or something that's happening somewhere else, and that language would prevent you from talking about something else. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, I was going to say, yeah, we were kind of transparent, didn't we, Mr. Mayor? But I don't know how you want to wrap up two, or...
No, no, it's just...
Okay, discussion, okay.
I think we can go to six.
I think we can go to six.
Okay, yeah, because we kind of tied three and two together.
We need to read, state the reasons, because you have a motion.
Yeah. We need somebody to make a motion to come back to regular rules of, of council.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Savette?
Yes.
Bariak?
Yes.
Waddell?
Yes.
Braymire?
Yes.
Alberini?
Yes.
Okay. Motion to accept the finance director's January report and attachments as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. Ms. Monson, I want to ask you something. Under the city administration, there was forty-three-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents, and it said, credit cards. I'd like to ask, who, who has credit cards, and is this normal? Is this expenditure per month normal?
All right, the answer to your question is, per Ohio Vice Code, there is a new policy that our law director is our reviewer of the credit card statement. As, as part of the fiscal officer's report, I'm required by our policy to submit a monthly report on credit cards. So we have credit cards with city administration, that is for, three cards that are issued for city administration. That's for the city manager, or city clerk, and a member of council.
A member of council has it?
Yes.
What is it for?
That is for councilman Waddell to attend economic development meetings, is what typically has been used for the credit card. For seminars, conferences.
Does it specifically state one member of council?
I believe the policy...
Or is it what the, the city manager just gave him the right?
I believe the policy is for economic development, I believe is how it's written, but I don't have the policy in front of me, and I don't want to give out wrong information.
Uh, I've been down to Eastgate all last year, and I never, I don't have a credit card or anything, that's for economic development. I rode to Youngstown on my own gas and that. I mean, I don't have a credit card. Do, do you have a credit card, Mrs. Braymire?
Uh, no.
You're on economic development, Mr. Alberini, do you have a card?
I pay for everything myself personally, John.
All right, and the mayor, you're on economic, do you have a credit card? Would you like me to explain?
Give me your...
I'm just asking some questions, I'm not accusing you. I want to know, is it, I ask, is this normal? I ask, is this normal, the amount of expenses?
It's the policy, so if you don't like policy, you have to make a recommendation to the city manager. It's a policy the city manager wrote with the assistance of the law director to be in compliance with the Ohio Vice Code. So the policy is an administrative policy, there's rules and regulations, it's by Ohio Vice Code, the State Auditor's Office passed this law, and there's definitely requirements for this law, and Joe, I believe it's called a compliance officer, and our, our law director is our compliance officer, so if there's any issues at all with credit cards, he's the one that oversees it, per the Ohio Vice Code, in our policy. But that's how the policy's written, so...
I don't, I don't, I put, I put a motion, tried to get a motion on the floor before, where I don't want to begrudge the money, I want to know where the money's going. Well, did you charge for this? Did you charge, what was charged here, what was charged there? Where did you go? Don't you think that's a right of a councilman to know where the city finances are going?
You could absolutely ask them.
Well, I asked to put that on the floor, I probably will put that on there, that we have some type of accounting over the checks written per month, and the credit cards, what's being spent?
Chairman, can I be back here next? Councilman, if you pick up the phone as the finance department, you get any piece of information on any financial expenditure in this city, you have every right to do it, I encourage you to do it, and usually you do do it. So do so, please.
Mr. Jim, I'll answer that question, and when, you know, we go to ML, we go to Economic Development Summit's down there, and do these classes that the city's, you know, covering there. I pay for all my own fuel, all my own food, and all that, I always have. I went down to Columbus and back two days in a row, I pay for all that. But what happens is, when you go down there, when you make the reservations for the room, you know, the clerk makes it here, when you go to the hotel, if you don't have a credit card to hold it on, and it's, it's, you know, you don't want to get all reimbursements, it causes other issues, so you have the credit card, the city's credit card, to put that on. Now, I will state emphatically that there has not been one charge on the credit card that wasn't pre-approved, bless you, by the city manager, and pre-approved, pre-approved and pre-arranged through meetings. It's just, rather than going down there, making a phone call to the finance director to get some kind of a form that you have to send down, and then, everything this way is tracked, everything is right up and online, it's in, everything's up on board, and you see everything, and everything's done. But nothing is done without preapproval of the city manager, based on the meeting that we're going to. So we don't use it for anything other than, you know, an overnight stay at a room, or, in fact, that's the only we've ever used it for, so... What I'm, all I'm saying, Mayor, is, I don't even know, the way it is, what part of that forty-three-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents goes to you? None of it. What part goes to Mr. Lynch spending?
It's a combination of both, of the city manager's, city clerk's card, and, and the council member's card, for that amount, for the forty-three for that month. It's a combination of three cards.
And it has a very, very low limit.
Yes, it does.
Yes, it does. Well, look, in, in other words, let's say I want to go, I have somebody for economic development.
Right.
And I want to take them to dinner.
Yes.
Will you reimburse me?
Sure.
Absolutely.
Well, it's two dollars for the hot dog, but... Where are you taking them? There are limits, you know?
I like wanting to...
Okay. Can't do that.
Do you have any other comments?
For the finance director?
May I present the report now, since I have the question? On, on the topic of credit cards, it's highly audited every year, the State Auditor's Office pulls every receipt. We have had audit comments about tips in the past, we've changed our policy, we've been in compliance, there was no issues in 2018 on our credit card usage. From time to time, we do see occasional fraud, I immediately report it to the bank, we get our money back, we don't pay for anything that's improper, we monitor these statements on a monthly basis, we ask for itemized receipts, and typically, why we have to use credit cards, is sometimes computer equipment has to have a credit card, Adobe licenses for computers, Microsoft licenses, we have to go attend conferences, it's typically for hotel reservations, and we do have credit cards separate from the, this is the Huntington ones, we also have gasoline credit cards as well, in case if there is travel and stuff like that, where it's exempt from paying gas, we get a good deal on that as well. So the overall financial report for the month of January, it includes the bank balances, there's a revenue utility report, we spent a lot of time tonight on the credit card report, but overall, we are financially sound, our income tax is doing well, and are, basically the month of January to be balanced, our book to bank value, just got to find the report, eight million nine hundred forty-three thousand, three hundred and seventy-two dollars and six cents. And that concludes my remarks, Your Honor.
Get a roll call on that.
What are we, what are we going to do with this? But, what, accept the finance report?
Yes.
Okay, any discussion before roll call? All right, roll call.
Bariak?
Yes.
Waddell?
Yes.
Braymire?
Yes.
Alberini?
Yes.
Savette?
Yes.
Okay, public comments?
We got a number seven.
We added Mr. Waddell's motion.
Oh, that's right. All right. All right, what was, what was the motion? How was, how do you get that?
Ask them to have me reread it.
Yeah.
The court actually has a copy of itself. The motion is a vote to support, a vote of support for the Parker Recreations Commission to start looking into a recreational facility, including but not limited to the input from council, baseball and softball leagues, a soccer league, the school volleyball and basketball teams, residents, seniors, and consultants.
So moved.
Got a second. All right, discussion?
This is for the recenter?
No, it's to look into, to look into it.
Study, study. And this will have to go, if you're asking for half a million dollars, it'll probably go to the voters, right?
Not necessarily.
Mr. Mayor?
This is something that we have discussed in our economic meetings last, the last probably
four years, and we've included a school superintendent, Paul, Paul's as well. He thought it was a great idea. The purchase of the Congregational Church, just kind of, as Lyle said, kind of dovetails what we like to do to fulfill that vision. So having a multipurpose rec center in our community, as you know, you travel around with your kids, everybody has one, we don't.
Well, that's what I mentioned it to Mr. Waddell when we were, when he brought it up, that I had told him different things, findings that I've had, you know, traveling different communities, different states, things that it has to have, if you're going to be able to offer it out there for different things to make monies. And then to also to throw out there too, since, you know, we are being recorded and such, that, to make sure people understand that we're not looking to stick, you know, another bill on people, but, you know, if, you know, we put something together as nice as possible, as inexpensive as possible, and look for as much grant money as possible. So that's really the only thing I have on it. Any other discussion on it before we vote? All right, roll call?
Waddell?
Yes.
Braymeyer?
Yes.
Alberini?
Yes.
Zavet?
Yes.
Beria?
Okay, passes. Public comments?
Katie Paul, 128 West Corey. Quite a few things happened this evening, a lot of discussions, and thank you for some clarifications on things from the city manager also. The move to an emergency level for the church property was, at best, a shock to all of our citizens, and the paperwork was not signed by the church. We have a, well, okay, I'm not going to let you respond because I don't want to get in trouble. The copies that we saw, the copies that we saw, that I saw myself personally, is not signed from the seller, and the buyer part is, but the seller portion is not. And that leads me to believe, okay, something here is not correct. Something's not right here. So why was it an emergency, and why was it presented to council as a body, as an emergency? They passed it as an emergency. Something just not right here. Or doesn't appear to be, I'm not, doesn't appear to be. So I'm still questioning that myself. I don't think it's correct. Where's the money coming from? Where? Another question I have, okay, there's a major issue with our utility, our statements, the way we're doing things. Personally, I have finally, thank you Kathy King and Andrea, she's not here, for finally taking care of something after, since last July, June and July of 2019, yesterday, it was finally taken care of. The billing situation, and when I re-watched the meeting, last, last meeting, it came to light, finally shed some light on the fact that, okay, our guys, and thank God for our guys from all the different departments, water, sewer, electric, and everything, they've become meter readers. Shame on us. Since when are our guys, who are supposed to be taking care of our utilities, they've had to become meter readers because our meter readers are doing what? Or where did they go? Are they working in finance, in police department, in, and yes, I'm being very sarcastic, I'm being sarcastic. But where did they go? What are they doing? But our guys have had to take time out of their jobs, and per, I'm trying to remember what Mr. George, Bill George said, but they each had to give up a guy to do meter readings, and in some cases, it took to the middle of the month. Well, now I know why the bills were all messed up. So shame on our, our whomever, because this wasn't taken care of. Why wasn't it taken care of? Why did it take so long? And in my case, it took eight months to take care of the situation with my bills, my utility problem. But thank you, Mrs. King and Andrea, for taking care of it, finally getting it taken care of, and the appeals board to make sure it was done. So, thank you.
Riggs and Mezzick, 242 Oak Hill. I'll start with the last issue with credit cards. I don't mind that your supervisors have, I don't mind that council has credit cards. I think I would suggest to you to create a policy for use of that. Have the department head or councilman come up to you and say, "I want to go two days, three days down to Columbus to..."
Do this. You say, "I agree with you. It's good for you. It's good for the city. Spend up to a hundred fifty dollars a night for, you know, it doesn't have to be a Taj Mahal. Set a meal policy for lunch and dinner. The only thing I would hate about that would be alcohol purchase." And I should, as a citizen, have the right to request, by public request, to get copies of those credit card receipts, naturally with the cards redacted, so that I can see that there's no abuse in there, which she should be checking, and you should be checking anyways, when you sign off of them at the end of the month.
What do you think you said is the current policy?
Okay. Next thing is utility extensions. I think the very first priority should be our citizens here in the city. There are people in this city, and I'm going to mention names, Zach, you have one, Lyle, you have one, and John, you have one, that want city utilities, and they're in the city. They should come first. I would hate to see you give a long-term sweetheart deal to the arsenal because of, we charge forty percent surcharges for outside the city. And we also have, what are you going to do with this? We also have a ordinance that if we're going to extend utilities, they have to annex. You're going to have to get rid of that ordinance. Because I don't think Camp Garfield's going to annex. So, somebody told me, and correct me if I'm wrong, one percent raises to our full-timers. They're your best asset here, is your employees. Somebody said it costs twenty-five thousand dollars. With what we're spending on a lot of other things, that's peanuts. I appreciate you doing the one percent, you know, every year so far, and then there's going to come a point, and it's probably going to be next year, census comes, if we get over five thousand people, the unions are going to come back with a vengeance. Thank you very much.
Chelsea Harper, 128 West Corey. So first, no disrespect to you, Anna, that dog is considered a canine officer and goes through extensive training. Perhaps I took that the wrong way, but I think it deserves a little bit more respect than dog. My dad begged me, before I came to this meeting, to watch what I said and to pay attention to every little bitty thing that I said, and to make sure that what I was saying was absolutely correct. So during the council meeting, listening to everyone, especially the part about the sunshine laws, I did a little bit of research, I guess. So the part in the sunshine laws that you're talking about would be in the Ohio Open Meetings Act, Chapter Eight, Section A, Part Three, is the right to hear but not to be heard or disrupt. All meetings of any public body are declared to be public meetings open to the public at all times, which is what you guys are considered. A court found that members of a public body who whispered in past documents, among themselves, constructively closed that portion of their meeting by intentionally preventing the audience from hearing or knowing the business the body discussed. However, the Open Meetings Act does not provide or prohibit attendees the right to be heard at meetings. Note that other laws may apply to the limit, the restrictions the public body can place on the public's ability to speak during meetings. Further, a disruptive person waives his or her right to attend meetings, and the body may remove that person from the meeting. So while all of that is true, if you look at different articles or different cases, such as the City of Dayton versus Esrodi, the public nature of the legislative process and the right of citizens to participate in and voice their opinions about that process are at the heart of the democratic government, which was a Supreme Court ruling. Like, it ended up going all the way up. If you know your court cases in the past, you know that when you're stepping on the sunshine laws, which the sunshine law doesn't give us any protection on this, but you have different bylaws underneath it. So while the sunshine law, yes, it gives you the right to take away our public comments, it doesn't give you the right to step on other cases that have gone through Supreme Court hearings. So just tread lightly on that one. And if you're going to move the public comments to the beginning of the meeting, you're not giving us the right to talk about anything that you discuss on this floor. And I'm sorry, but two weeks from now, I'm not going to think about this meeting, other than the whole church issue, everybody's talking about it. But I'm not going to think about the tiny little tidbits that I had during this meeting, like, like the canine officer part, or worrying about the park being inspected, et cetera, to put in a new play area. Those little things get lost. And if you're not reading every little bit of the minutes between the meetings and bringing it up here to say it during that small portion, you're not giving us the option for our freedom of speech. You guys can talk all you want up there and discuss all you want, but it's us you're representing. So yes, is it right for us to come up here and say anything rude? No. But under the sunshine law, you have the right to kick us out. And there's other Supreme Court laws that say that you have the right to kick us out. Thanks.
Tim Stinson, 253 Arlington. I'd just like to say I'm also on Parks and Rec and on the chair. I think, first of all, I'll go with the Rec Center. I think that's something that I've been talking about for a very, very long time. It's something that's needed for the kids, and especially right now during the winter, going to practice or open to anyone else in the community to use. So I think that's a great idea. Second of all, I'm probably going to contradict myself here now. The grant for the playground equipment and the placing of the equipment, who decided what equipment was going to get purchased? Because I can't remember if that ever went through my board, being on Parks and Rec. I know you're not going to answer me right now, but it'll play into my second comment about raising money for commissions. Look, I think that's great, but that's not the reason why we're losing people. We're losing people because decisions like that happen, and they don't get brought to the table. So our board, our commission, isn't very valuable at times because we don't get direct input. I can speak, I know that for a fact on our commission, and I'm sure it's on planning and zoning and a couple other commissions. That's it. Thanks.
Steve Simpson, 420 Rivetta Road. It's been a long... Most of you, and for those of you who don't know, it's been four years. I was, I'm sorry, I was president of the Preservation Foundation for the first three years, resigning one year ago today, as a matter of fact, I read this month, to join Connie and Heritage Accord, to finally get this across the finish line. I owe a lot of thanks to a lot of people. We've come a long way in the past four years. Thank you to Mr. Lynch for his efforts in this. Joe Fritz put in, I couldn't possibly begin to know how many hours you've put into this lease. But thank you for, to council, for voting to pass this and to enter it into this lease. Thank you from Connie and I and Heritage Accord. And thank you from all the citizens of Newton Falls who have been behind us in getting this accomplished. So, thank you all.
Okay, is that it then? All right, closing remarks.
Okay, sorry.
Over this, over the buying of the Congregational Church, I stand behind my vote because I'm a businessman. I don't have a major corporation like IBM, but I've been able to survive forty-seven years. And I'm not going to put, and I got the figures from Mrs. Munson, fifty thousand dollars, we bought it in ninety-five for forty-eight thousand dollars. Tax appraisal on the building itself is only fifty. And God, gosh knows, I was conservative. I'm not going to put a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty thousand dollars into something where we have it as move-in ready. It's going to be a great asset to the community. I'm willing to take the hit on that. The other thing that I want to say tonight, and look, I want to give an example, and if I'm out of line tonight, people will call me on it, but was a guy was saying to his buddy, he said, he was, he got sober. And he said, "I haven't found it necessary to take a drink for two years." And his buddy looked at him and said, "I saw you stumbling out of Shimbo Joe's last night." He says, "Yeah, but that wasn't necessary." So what I'm trying to say, I just want to know where the money's spent. I feel that's a right of a county. I will be introducing a motion that the council people, at the end of the month, get something broke down. I know we're going to get the open checkbook. I've preached on that. C-2018 has finally been easier to get on. And I would hope the open checkbook, and, look, it's taxpayers' dollars. It's not my money. And it's not anybody's money up here. It's the taxpayers' dollars we have to take care of. But it was my money. I could do what I want. I could go down, spend it all, do what I want. But I have to answer to the people that elected me. It's their money. And with that being said...
I have something to say.
To my honored colleague, if she'd like to say anything. Thank you tonight.
Yeah, I just wanted to say a couple things about this section here where we were going to discuss the changing of the things on the agenda. I do really feel that that is not right, because it is people's First Amendment right to speak. It's been done this way. It should be done this way, kept this way. And I just, I don't understand how this all of a sudden came up, that someone wants to do that. You know, I think we need to have more information about things like that, instead of bringing them here. Since this came out on the computer, I almost had fifty phone calls, five people at my door, wanting to know how I felt about this, and why I would go for something like that. And I said I did not. It was put on the agenda, and, you know, they just did not think that was right. They were very angry about that. So I think maybe we should think about, more about things that you're going to put on this agenda. Okay, thank you.
I had called city manager Lynch, because I looked at it, just like anybody else, when I started studying what we had, and I got concerned, because I thought it was like a done deal or something.
Yeah.
And the fact of the matter is, to be fair to Mr. Zavet, it was put on there just as discussion, you know what I mean? And that's, and after I got that, I said, "Oh, okay, then that's fine." Like, if you ever, I mean, you don't know if something's right or wrong unless you evaluate it. And that's, and that's all we did tonight, is took the time to evaluate and share feelings.
I'll answer a couple of questions. Mr. Stinson, I agree with you a hundred percent. Things that need to be in front of Park and Recs need to be in front of Park and Recs, or planning and zoning, or any other commission we have. You know, we have a history for many, 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 many years and decades of not using our committees, or like they're supposed to be done. A lot of this stuff should go to a committee, and it doesn't go that way, because we don't have some of the right type of committees. We have a lot of committees that we never use, that we should streamline and fix, and maybe put in some other type of committees. But you're right, things that, that's why I called you and talked to you about this, because I know that's one of your, you know, your thoughts and ideas as a rec center. And it's a great idea. This was just something I set home and did, because, you know, the seniors want a walking track, or people want this. So I thought I'd lay it out and see how you put things together. But this is where I think it should be, in your lap, and I think you should, you know, work to put this whole thing together with the support of everybody else. As to the, back to the credit card for a second, I don't believe the State of Ohio allows you to charge alcohol on a city credit card in any way, shape, or form, and if you do, the auditors will have a stroke, and you'll know about that.
if you do, the auditors will have a stroke, and you'll know about that. So, that will never happen. As to, as I said, you know, when there's something that needs to be put on that, it's pre-approved by the city manager, it's just taken along and used down there, so we, they'll lose the paper with trail in the middle, there's always a trail that we have, if Mrs. King can't find something, she can go back and get it on the computer, because it's there. It's just the absolute right way to do it. No meals have ever been put on that card. If you guys would like though, I'd love to go back for meals and 10 years of travel, but, hey, that's what I do, and I picked that up, I have no problems with it. But the city pays no meals, the city pays no fuel, and they pay for no alcohol, if there's any involved. So, you can leave that out. There was a post on Facebook, I love to go to these things, this was a rather long one, and it's a vain attempt to maybe influence people in an upcoming election, but the, I think it was a very positive email, a lot of great things were going on here, a lot of good things we're doing, a lot of things over the years have been great, and I think this was an absolutely fantastic email, or a post showing the good things that we're doing, but there was a couple of things in there that need to be addressed a little bit, because they're kinda not quite right. One of them was, the property at 5 and 534. And the post says, "The city purchased property at the northeast corner of 5 and 534, located in Braysville Township, that has gas storage tanks that will need removing, it's too small, again, it's too small for the intended purpose that it was purchased for." Now first of all, we have a consultant that is working with us to remove those tanks, they've been underground since 1952, I'm not sure how much leakage there is, because the tanks are full. When we exposed the tanks and pulled the caps off, they were full, which was a real surprise to everybody. So that, to me, shows kinda minimal leakage if anything, and there's always going to be some. They weren't in use very long, they were, the gas station was only in use, used for a couple of years, if that, and then there was a business on there, everybody knows GNW Driving was there forever. So, you know, the reason that we haven't, we've applied for the grants, and there's a website that is out there within the state of Ohio, and it's closed, if I understand correctly, and until it opens, the grant can't be submitted. And so we're, they're watching the site to make sure that, as soon as it opens, that that grant will be submitted, and we have every confidence that the removal of the tanks will be 100 percent paid, plus some reimbursement the city had to find the tanks and do all that will also be paid. Now, when we go to the part that says that the lot is too small for the purpose that it's intended, I guess I don't know what anybody's thinking there, 'cause we have never talked about what we wanna put out there, there's speculation in economic development meetings on, you know, what might or might not go there, but no one has ever said, "We're gonna put X, Y, or Z on that lot," so I don't know how you could sit there and say, "Whatever's intended won't fit." So I did something for you, and that's what this paper I passed around was. That lot that we bought is 2.21 acres, and just so you know, there's a lot of things can go on that lot. The Newton Falls Dairy Queen's only .13 acres. The KFC on Market Street and Warren now, that's on .28 acres. The Sunrise Restaurant's on .32 acres. Handyman Hardware on Elm Road's on .32 acres also. The Sheetz out at Elm Road and North Road, right there at the corner, that's on .33 acres. The Mocha House is on .51 acres. Caesar's Restaurant there on Market Street's on .52 acres, a half an acre. Arby's is on a .66. The Newton Falls Dental Clinic out here on 534 is on 1.101 acres. Dr. Baker's office is on 1.05 acres. St. Mary's Social Hall is on 1.08 acres. Perkins Restaurant out on Elm Road is on 1.27 acres. The Pizza Hut in Warren is on 1.13. Eaton Park, it's a nice place out there, it's on 1.49 acres. Dutchess Fuel on Route 5 is on 1.52 acres. The Enzo's Restaurant, we all like to go to Enzo's.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's on 1.9 acres. We have 2.21 acres out there. The only thing around here that's just a little bit bigger is the Newton Falls Post Office is on 2.3 acres, nine hundredths of an acre larger, and the American Legion's on 2.7 acres, but there's a lot of grass and parking lot. So as you can see, there's a ton of things that'll go on that piece of property. So to say that the property won't work because it won't take the business we intended it for is BS. The other thing, and I'm gonna refer right to Mr. Bariak, I guess, 'cause he was here for something. The other thing that was talked about is that we gave, we forgave the last $71,000 of the school's electric bill to the school, that we should've done that. And I'm gonna go back to, Mr. Bariak brought up 1992, and I thank you for that, because in 1992, during the previous administration, council, and not the mayor, the mayor doesn't vote, and I don't know why they, he keeps throwing up, "The mayor does this, the mayor does that." Mr. Klein's not voting, and I didn't vote. And at the time, the mayor didn't vote. But council agreed to give Vice Hardwoods, they were having trouble, they were struggling, and they agreed to give him part of their bill away. And they still couldn't make it, they went out of business, and we lost all the rest of it anyway. So we lost, I don't know what it was, $85,000, $90,000, something like that, that, you know, they did the right thing at the time by trying to work with the business, and give the business a break, and try to keep the business in town, keep the people employed, and work with it. It didn't cost the taxpayers or the electric users a dime, they just did the right thing by working with the business and trying to keep the business here. And those are the things that you have to do, that's what we have to do, is work with the businesses. With the school, it's a little bit of a different story. The school that wasn't going out of business or couldn't afford to pay their bills, we made the mistake. The city made the mistake. And nobody seems to know exactly what that number was, but it's upwards of three quarters of a million dollars, and because when there was a change in amperage and breaker boxes and stuff, the multiplier didn't get changed. Now, I'm not blaming anybody for it, because it's one of those little things, but there's a plan in place now, we have a policy in place to make sure that doesn't happen again. And it didn't, it wasn't discovered for, what, eight or 10 years, it was quite a deal. We made that mistake. So now, we're gonna go back and back-bill the school for almost a million dollars of your taxpayers' dollars. They're your taxpayers' dollars also, it comes out of your pocket as a taxpayer. So the city decided to forgive them, you know, part of that, and then this council decided to forgive them the rest. The school's struggling like everybody else. Doesn't matter what taxpayers' pocket it comes out of, and again, by forgiving that, it didn't cost the taxpayers a dime here, it didn't cost the utility a dime, it did not raise your utility rates in any way, shape, or form. But that's just another way that we have worked as a council, to work with the schools and work with people to help them do the right thing, and try to keep the school on the straight and narrow, just as we did with the business back in 1992. You know, when they talk about this church over here, when we first heard about that and found out there was 16,000 square feet in this building, everybody's eyes kinda lit up, because we know what this building is, and there's already some discussion on what the judge wants to do in those things, and how he wants to utilize this facility. We know what the annex is like, and it would probably happen with the portage yard over there upstairs or something, I don't know, but that's, I mean, there's a, there's a lot of things need to be done. And this is just got, this building has so much to offer this community, and it's a great deal. And there are a tremendous amount of people that are happy with this. I don't care what the people that are talking about the referendum, I couldn't care less. Good luck, go collect them. But there are a lot of people that are really happy we did this, and there's even more people happy that we're considering to put a recreational facility in this community, because we need it, it's something that these kids have. The community center, everybody knows my feelings on the community center, I haven't changed those feelings. Good luck, I hope it works for you, I hope you put a theater in there, I hope that that happens, and that would be interesting, to see how it's gonna work. But it's not a recreational facility, and it's no place for the kids to do the things today that we used to do, and you can't do a lot of the things in there that they wanna do. A recreational facility is great, it doesn't have to be the size of Niles or a Taj Mahal or a $50 billion building, it just needs to be a building laid out so that it can be used and utilized by our people, get somebody to work it out and run it and do that, and this just opens this community up to a lot of great, positive things, because one of the things you look at in economic development is quality of life in your community. We've got some good things to offer, but this is another step in the right direction of offering better quality of life issues, and this, when it's done, and it will be done, I'm sure, is going to be a complete and beautiful asset to this community. You guys are doing a great job in this council, you're passing the right issues, you're doing the right things, keep doing the right things. Thank you.
Mr. Earl Brinney.
I'm, I'm good. We're passing.
The only thing I have is I wanted to thank the individuals that came out tonight, instead of sitting at home and wondering about things, you came, you listened, you participated, and I think that's a, that's a great thing, and it's good for the whole community. I wanted to, once again, you know, thank everybody in the council here for a lot of good input, a lot of good discussion, a lot of good evaluations. Some of the things that we do, is it the best way to do it, or can it be tweaked, can it be changed? You know, I thank you for that. And my big word, I guess, for today is multitask, and that's something that I ask in the, in the community, that we make sure that we do, that, you know, as mayor, you know, I rub shoulders with a lot of people, and at times have made promises to look into certain things, and, you know, one individual out there is a John Thompson, some of you guys know John in the wheelchair, and I had promised him that we need to look into when the weather gets better, getting the sidewalks worked on. You know, I've heard people say, "Why are you not working on?" Well, there's white stuff all over them for the last month, you know, that makes it a little bit difficult. But we need to take care of our residents, we need to, individuals talk about the utilities and stuff, we need to do that, but at the same time, we need to multitask and be reaching out, you know, looking into what makes the most sense, and outreach, the neighbors across the border, the arsenal and different things like that, we need to take care of our residents, but part of taking care of the residents sometime is looking into cost-efficient growth in our, in our community, that way that the residents don't have to carry all the burden on their backs, you know, but I just wanna, you know, once again, you know, thank you, thank the residents, thank the councilmen, and everybody else up here, we're all on the same page, and, you know, we're gonna do well. Anybody else? City manager, law director?
I have nothing further.
Nothing further, Mr. Chair.
Your honor, and members of council, I would just like to address a few things, if I First and foremost, I'm honored and blessed to be the fiscal officer for the village of Newton Falls, but there are some comments that were made tonight I need to address. Newton Falls has deep roots with me personally, with my family and my heritage here, and I have grown up in Trumbull County, this is home. I'm a horn-raised dairy farmer. I have 17 brothers and sisters, so we're hard workers, okay?
Oh, wow.
So...
Need a bear raise.
Well, I just, I don't think this community understands how proud I am to call Newton Falls home. And over my career, I started being a fiscal officer on September of the year 1999. And in that time, I started writing grants for multiple communities. And so I have under my belt over 20 Nature Works grants that I have written over multiple millions for not just Newton Falls, I got our first one here. I came to David, I said, "No, what, can I please take this project?" I have designed parks for other communities, because of my agriculture and environmental science background, also on finance, biology background, I've written, created nature preserves all throughout, throughout the state of Ohio, Sandusky Hollow, I have a list of projects that I have completed, and I'm very proud of it. But I'm proud that I'm now putting my blood, sweat, and tears into this community I've just started. I've written a federal cops grant, it wasn't successful, I'm not done. I helped our police department with the Halo grant, we were successful for that, but it was a challenge, we couldn't find out a way to really spend that money, working on BWC grants. But when I say a police dog, I don't disrespect them, I respect our police department probably more than anybody. I've worked with multiple police departments throughout this state, and will do anything for our public services, 'cause they, what they do is unbelievable. Now, on the Parks Grant, I actually did consult with the Park and Recreation Department here on the committee. Two of the members came to my office, I showed them the plans, I showed them the book, I know who the consultants are, I know who the engineers are. It's not my first rodeo to this, I've done 20 of them. So, I knew exactly that we have a van, we had, we don't now, we had a vandalism problem. And I knew where our layout of our park equipment is not the right place for it. So we're gonna move it up front for everyone to see and use, near a restroom, up front. We designed, we're just starting, this is just phase one, folks, we're not done. So, I'm just rolling up my sleeves, and I just wanna let you know that. So I did talk to a Bob Lay and another member, came to my office, so if the Parks and Rec Department, anytime you wanna come and help me, my door's open. I'm here to work and figure out what's best for our community. In addition, it was mentioned about our policies and procedures. This community has policies and procedures for many years. We've always had a credit card policy, we just had to really revise it recently because of the state auditor's office. We are never a permissible bylaw, ever, to purchase alcohol. That's known. So I don't know why we're making an issue about alcohol on receipts, and that we need these policies. And I know it was a former council member, but all council member, when you're hired, you have to sign a handbook. You're given the policies, you are given the credit card policy, you are given the travel policies. These things were here before I was here, so to say we don't have policies, council, I just wanna remind you, you signed off on them, we have them. If you guys don't have a copy of them, if you want me to resend them out, I'll be more happy to give you that information. So I just wanna correct some unknowns out there about those comments, that this finding instructor's willing to work for our community and do whatever it takes. Thank you for your time, again, this is a blessing that I'm here, and I'm just starting.
I guess that's, that's everybody. We don't have anything for executive session, correct? All right. Yeah, we're gonna make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Savette?
Yes.
Bariak, what else?
Yes, yes, yes.
We didn't wanna have discussion on that?